No, you're good now.
Yes, sir. Sorry as well, thank you.
It's really nice to see you. You're a culture.
So I don't know if that's a change.
Yeah. On our here. I think we're working. The planning division and the city side. We're not going to do it. Some of them think it's coming along. I don't know. They're not here. My next step is to. I don't know. Some of them. I was. They're just first. My first. First. New office. Place talks.
He has a good chance of practicing.
Now he's. He only got to move. Or that's even for practice. He was me best friend. Since I was here, it's too much. So I don't say.
Oh, well, this. I don't know about that. You have to ask the cameraman when he comes back.
Well, we can move down.
Yeah, we can. Sorry, before you sit.
It's all. Your job. You're coming in. I'm going to talk to him. Do you notice the whole side?
And. You should have. It's really worth it. What you're saying. Yes.
I don't know. No.
Yes.
Good. Sure. It's not bad. I'm done.
Very nice.
I know he wants to be.
Yeah.
Still, that's. He's still making sure. But you know what? She is not. Yeah.
I'm going to clean off some of my nails. Thank you. I mean. I'm sorry. I'm trying to. I'm trying to. I'm trying to. Yes. I'm trying to. 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 So. I'm trying to. I'm trying to. I'm trying to. I'm trying to.
It's hard.
I'm trying to. I'm trying to. I'm trying to. That's it. I'm trying to. 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 Yeah. Okay. I'm trying to. 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 I'm trying to.
I'm sorry. Okay. Six acres.
Not at all.
Okay.
So. How are you doing? Good.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Well, the, I'm walking. I'm. I have to rest. For walking.
That's. That's.
Could be dark. So. I thought it was. I was. I don't know. I'm going to go to rest. It was fine. Sometimes I go. I'm. I don't know. I don't know. I gotta go to rest. It was fine. Sometimes I go. I'm. 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 I'm always. I'm. All right. I get you. I'm. I'm sure. I'm. I'm. I've been. I don't know. I see. I was. She. It's bad. I like. You know. I think. I think. That's. This is. Ah.
Yeah, you can't. You can't write a quote on that. Yeah, yeah, for some reason. They may. It's a quote. Uh. Sorry. That's your name. It's not mine. That's. Okay, so what we did. So we got to get. Let's go.
But I don't get this one. It's somehow. It's. Is it? This is. First. Not to me. To.
I'm. I'm trying to. Stop.
There's something. I lost some. Wait. Wait, wait. Okay. You know. You know that. You know. Like Lawson's. It's. I could. You. Yeah. I'm. 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 I didn't. I didn't.
You have a. Oh. Definitely. Well, we're. Some of them. You know.
No. Well, I love. I'm.
Anyone taking this back?
I was. I'm. Sure. You. You. Joe. How is this? Oh. You. This. What is? What is? Are you? Also. How is your? My. You. It's. I'm. 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 You. Really. I'm. 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 It's just. So. I'm.
Oh.
I'm. You don't have to.
I'm. I mean. Starting. I mean. I need. I need. Yes. Yes. I think. I'm. I'm. Everybody's already said everything. I said. It's just. It's a. You. Shoot. I want. Shoot. Tell her. And it's. Take. I would treat it. Slow. Because. Because. I think. I'm. I usually. But. See. I'm. Trust. I'm. Look. This. The. This. It's. When he is. Oh. I think. Uh. I'm. I'm. Wow. You. It's. Sure. Now. No. It's. I see. I see. No, those. Two. Two. Three. I want. I agree. I don't. It's. I don't. I get. Uh. I was. I think. You ever know what it's. One. It's. Always. One. I got a. Freaking up in the car. I saw.
Okay.
This is. We. Work. On. So.
Everybody's. There.
No, but the king room person. Wondering. But he. You're welcome to sit here. But this. It's a guy that. Collaborating.
Don't want. That. Ask you a lot.
Move. Out of that.
All right. Yeah, I couldn't. Well, look at. Yeah. He doesn't want any of this. About. This is. It's not. About.
You want.
Show. Show.
She's going. Out. She's gone. So.
Why? I got. It's about. Pretty. I don't. For you.
Jacy.
What? Watch. It's. Simple. I better. Fight. Fuck.
Yeah. I'm. 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 You know. I'm. 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 Two. I'm. I'm. Yeah. 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 That's. Good. I'm. 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 Yeah. I'm. 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 You. I'm. 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 I'm.
Good evening. Good evening. Welcome to the August 12th, 2019 special meeting of the Louisville Metro Planning Commission for hearing of a land use proposal advertised and documented today. The case being considered this evening is case number 19 SubDiv 1001 for the Breakers at Prospect located at 7800 Southern Farm Road. Staff will present a brief summary of the case, including the description of the proposal and an outline of the most important issues. The staff report was provided to the commission members and advanced to today's hearing. Copies of the staff report have been available in the office of the Planning Commission and are available for review in the lobby outside of this room. We will not read the staff report into the record. However, the staff report with the case on the agenda is hereby incorporated into the official record of this hearing. Next, the applicant or representative who made a statement in support of the application being considered by the Planning Commission. Other persons who supported the application will then be heard. Afterwards, those in opposition to the application will be heard. Finally, the applicant or representative may be heard to rebuttal. During a person's time to speak, he or she may ask questions of any prior address speaker or government employee present who has reviewed the case. Each speaker must remain available for questioning by address party. If not, either their testimony will not be considered. All speakers are asked to state their name and address, including zip code for the record, when they approach the podiums and before making any other statements. Everyone wishing to provide testimony is still out of speaker's record form. These forms are available on the table in the lobby outside of this room. Please note that following time limits are ineffective for the case on today's agenda. The applicant's representative and other persons in favor of the application shall have a total of no more than one hour of their remarks. Persons opposed to the application shall have a total of no more than 75 minutes to offer comments on the proposal. Rebuttal by the applicant shall be allotted no more than 15 minutes. The Planning Commission's deliberations and voting on the case will occur in business session held immediately after conclusion of testimony related to the case. Any statements related to the case, however, must be made during the public hearing portion of the agenda. As a rule, no person shall be allowed to speak during deliberations. The Planning Commission's deliberation and voting on each case will occur in business session held immediately after the conclusion of testimony related to the case. Any statements related to the case must be made during the public portion of the hearing. All documents and records in the Planning Commission files have been available for public inspection in the Planning Commission office. Anyone interested in today's case should pick up a copy of the handout file after the public hearing located on the table in the lobby. This will tell you what will happen after the public hearing is held and how it's being formed about the case. For all those who are here that wish to speak at today's hearing, please stand and raise your right hand so that we can swear you in the building. Do you swear or affirm with a testimony that you will provide the Planning Commission today as the truth? Thank you. You may be seated. Just to get everyone oriented to our area today, also with speakers, please use the microphone in the center back unless they have your own PowerPoint presentation in which they will need to use the podium up front. If the speaker from the microphone would like any slide brought up from a printed presentation, we can do that for you so you can still remain at the microphone in the back. All right. We will begin with the applicant.
Staff.
Forgot to.
Did a little bit of work. Joel, I'm planning and design services staff. Again, this is 19 SubDiv 1001, the Breakers at Prospect. Tonight's request is a major preliminary subdivision plan for 72 single-family residential lots on 46 acres. A little bit of site context, you can see on the star in the map, that's the subject site. It's a half mile west of US Island 42, one mile south of the county's northeast boundary. Three of the abutting sides are developed for single-family use, and the western boundary abuts the Garden Brown Preserve. Again, it's a proposal for 72 single-family lots on 46 acres. Two stub roadways enter the site and will be extended and connected through the subdivision. Sidewalks will be provided throughout with sidewalk or walking trail connections to adjacent subdivisions, and detention areas, trucanted credit areas, and roughly 11 acres of open space are provided. Some technical review comments, and you can find these technical review comments beginning about midway down the first page continuing through page two. I just wanted to summarize these technical review comments in the presentation. Preliminary approval has been received by MSD and Transportation Planning, the Department of Public Works. Jurisdictional determination for wetlands, as provided by Red Wing Engineering, has been provided and incorporated into the record. Initially, the proposal included some disturbance of steep slopes. Those are slopes greater than 30%, and a geotechnical slope evaluation report was provided. Changes to the plan no longer require the disturbance of these slopes, and so the slope evaluation report would no longer be required with current plan. The Heritage Group Fire Department has reviewed the proposal and has no objections to the project. If you recall from this project and the number of times that it's gone to LDNT and back, and now today at the public hearing, there's been several meetings, and I'll try and summarize the best that I can the timeframe. So underground stormwater infiltration was proposed on plan received June 11, 2019, and presented to LDNT on June 27. If you originally recall, we sent notice for the June 27 LDNT hearing and a public hearing date on July 18. The July 18 public hearing was, of course, canceled in lieu of today's night meeting. On June 24, 2019, PDS staff received communications from Riverfields Inc. and Louisville Water Company indicating that the subject property was within the wellhead protection area. The Louisville Water Company staff stated their concern with the proposed infiltration method at the LDNT meetings on June 27 and July 11. On July 24, 2019, staff received a formal letter from the Louisville Water Company stating their opposition to the use of underground infiltration, and staff presented this letter to LDNT on July 25. The applicant has since submitted plans on August 6, 2019, which no longer include a stormwater infiltration technique, and these plans received preliminary approvals from both MSD and Public Works, as approved yesterday. The lot layout remains unchanged. So in a preliminary subdivision plan, the second step to any preliminary subdivision plan is going to record subdivision, actually recording these lots with the D room. And prior to recording these lots with the D room, the recorder is required to collect the construction plan approvals from Public Works, MSD, Fire Chief, Health Department, all the utility agencies, KYTC if it's on a state road. And these approvals with Public Works and MSD may require additional prerequisite approvals from agencies such as the Army Corps of Engineers, Kentucky Division Water, or the Environment Protection Agency. So you can see that the site is surrounded by single-family R4 zoning districts and built out subdivisions on three sides. Just to give you an aerial of the subject site, you can see the two stub roadways coming into the site on the north side from the Ennis Brook subdivision, and then from the east side from the Southern subdivision. This is the access from the Southern subdivision on Heath Place. That road will be extended. Then this is the access on Southern Farm Road in the Ennis Brook subdivision. This is the June 11, 2019 plan. You can note on the June 11 plan that were infiltration areas located in this triangle, and note the layout of both the streets and the lots on this plan. On the August 6 plan, which has received those preliminary approvals, where the infiltration was previously located, in these areas, it has since been removed. Staff does find that the proposed subdivision complies with the requirements of Chapter 6, Part 2, and conforms to all zoning and form district regulations as contained in the Land Development Code. The Louisville Metro Planning Commission is tasked today with approving or denying this major preliminary subdivision plan with those conditions of approval, beginning on page six of the staff report. Are there any questions for staff?
Questions?
Man, chairman.
Yes.
I've got a question that might be more of an MSD question. Is there somebody here tonight?
There is a representative from MSD here.
The question that I would have is, just assuming that this gets approved tonight, at some point in time, they will have to. The developer will have to have an engineer that prepares many different plans, including a stormwater management plan.
Yeah, we can have that representative from MSD come up and answer that, but as I stated on, you know, one of my slides, there's several approvals.
Right.
That require construction documents prior to the recording of the lots, and that approval may require additional approvals, such as EPA, Army Corps.
But let's just say that the construction plans go to MSD for their review and approval. If there was a civil engineer that was retained by a person or an interested party that wanted to review what MSD's been provided with or those construction plans, are they available?
Typically, we do not, we make public record once we approve the plans, and we will allow people to do an open record request for those properties that are approved.
But ultimately, there is a mechanism for somebody that would be acting on behalf of an interested party to look at whatever plans are well before they start actually disturbing the site.
I don't know about well before, but they certainly are available before.
More than two minutes before the judge.
Right. It could be that, we could be talking days, though.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Art.
Thank you, Mr. Ashby. Typically, the detention rate, they can't exceed the pre, post development, can't exceed pre-development, is that the situation here? Was it a one-to-one, or were they required to detain more than?
They're proposing to detain almost three times what they would normally detain, and that's due to the size of the system that they'll be using to, using that goes through Sutherland.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, we'll go over the applicant.
Members of the Planning Commission, my name is Cliff Ashburn. I'm with Dins Warren Schole. Our address is 101 South Fifth Street, Suite 2500, Louisville 40202. I have with me from the Breakers at Prospect Stephanie Gillis in. I also have Pat Dominic, who you'll hear quite a bit from in just a few minutes. Can we have Ron Thomas here for questions if we need him? As just a matter of introduction, this is a little bit different than a zone change. I think the last time we were together in this room, we were talking about a zone change. And when you talk about a zone change, you talk about the comprehensive plan, you talk about a lot of broader sort of policy ideas that have been expressed as a way to guide development of the community. When we get together and we talk about a subdivision, we are instead speaking about technical compliance with the Land Development Code and with the subdivision regulations. And those are the documents that will guide your decision tonight. It's been said many, many times, no, I've said it to this commission before as well, if we comply with the Land Development Code and the requirements of the subdivision regulations, then the Planning Commission is obligated to approve the subdivision of property. That's a long-held concept of Kentucky law. That being said, I want to talk to you tonight about a development that I think is, in many respects, well above and beyond all of the requirements and many requirements that are contained in the Land Development Code. So just to orient you, again, you can see here on the site map where the Breakers at Prospect is. You know, Sutherland has been around a little bit, a little bit longer than I have been around in Louisville, not terribly long. I moved here in 1998. Looking back at some old satellite photos, if you go back to 1992, there's not much of Sutherland there, just the homes that are on 42. So it's a relatively recent development. Innesbrook, of course, was developed after that, around the late 90s, early 2000s. This is an aerial of the site. Just to point out a couple of things here, the existing home, the historic home on the property will remain. That'll be on its own oversized lot. Several of the farm buildings, though, will be removed to allow for the development. The open water there that you see, adjacent to one of the farm buildings, is proposed to be preserved as well. There'll be lots backing up to that. And this plan features a new, larger lake, about a three-acre lake, that'll be added to the property. That'll serve both as detention and as amenity, we think, for the folks who choose to build homes here. One thing about the Breakers, as you saw in the mapping there, there are not any lots in Sutherland left there. I don't believe there are any lots left in Innesbrook. So there are not many opportunities in Prospect, certainly on the South 42, to build a custom home. And the Breakers are going to provide that opportunity. You can see here as well, the stub streets from E's and from Sutherland Farm Road. For the Land Development Code, we are required to connect to those, and we are proposing to connect to those. You can see, this is a little bit repetitive of Joel's presentation there. That's E's, that's Sutherland Farm Road. And this is a rendering of the subdivision with the lot pattern and the street pattern that we propose. Another thing to note, this property is Zoned R4. R4 is a single-family residential zoning district. The maximum density under R4 is 4.84 dwelling units per acre, which comes out to a 9,000 square foot lot. That density is based off of the minimum lot size. Just to kind of walk you through, again, we're trying to prove to you tonight that we comply with the requirements of the code, subdivision regulations. All the lots that you see there exceed 9,000 square feet, several of them by quite a bit. And if you just did some simple math, looking at a normal R4 sort of yield on a piece of property, a typical R4 yield, even though the theoretical maximum is 4.84 dwelling units per acre, is really about three units an acre. This property's 49 acres times three, you're getting close to 150 lots. And the proposal that we have for you tonight is 72 lots, which is less than a half of the allowable density on the subject property. And I think that that is, that's an important factor for you to recall. Joel referred to the wetlands determination. One thing that is, that you're probably going to hear a lot about tonight is people's concerns about wetlands and other environmental issues. This process that we're in is part of the process that a developer has to go through in order to subdivide and improve a piece of property. That process, we have the local portion of that process, which includes the developer's vision for the property. If you want to think about it, that's the first draft of a plan. Once the developer has a vision for the property, our process, our local process says, now you need to go out and show that to the public and get the public's comments on the property. When this property, when this plan was initially proposed, it had more lots on it, and it didn't have. Now, after hearing from folks in the community, it has fewer homesites on it, and it has this larger drainage feature that Pat Dominic will come up and talk about a little bit. In addition to the developer's vision for the property and the public's expression about what it would like to see on the property, and what, you know, the public obviously has many, many voices, and so you hear many, many things. The plan then goes through technical review or an agency review, and that gets reviewed by the agencies that Joel referred to before. But I'll just remind you about it, it goes through Transportation Planning, it goes through Metropolitan Sewer District. Both of those agencies have signed off on this plan. And after we get, after the agencies determine that the plan is ready to move forward, it comes before you. And you all on the Planning Commission are tasked with reviewing the plan against the code and against the subdivision regulations. Once we get out of this process, there is still work left to do. While this plan is ripe for your review tonight, in order to impact wetlands on the property, you see the wetland delineation here, the orange wetlands that you see there are non-jurisdictional, so they will be impacted as part of the plan. The jurisdictional portion of the wetlands is reflected in red on this plan here. You can see, we have a jurisdictional open water feature, that's the pond that I told you would be preserved. A small bit of jurisdictional wetlands, you see in the red there, that'll be impacted. In order for that to occur, we have to go before the Army Corps of Engineers. And the Army Corps of Engineers will consult with the State of the Reserve.
State of the Reserve Preservation Office.
They will consult with the issue of wildlife. And then we anticipate getting a nationwide permit on this, on this plan that will allow for minimal impact. And just to tell you a little bit about the amount of impact, as you saw there, we've got green areas, they're jurisdictional features. We have the blue area, that's a jurisdictional feature. You can see, the jurisdictional wetland to be preserved is about an acre and a half, a little bit higher than that. The open waters, they'll over an acre. The area that's going to be impacted is less than two tenths of an acre. So about 90%, a little less than 90%, the jurisdictional features will be impacted by this plan. That's not to say that that has an impact on the code analysis or the subdivision regulation analysis, but just to let you know that there are other agencies that are going to look at this, and we're already working on how we're going to comply with their review. Now, the big issue, and I think I've seen some placards about flooding out there, is stormwater. And as a nobody, nobody in this room wants anybody to have flooding effects. And so Pat is going to talk about how we have gone about designing and redesigning and redesigning again stormwater, stormwater management on the subject property. So what do we, what do we have to deal with, what did Pat and his engineers have to deal with? One is, if you looked at, like I said, if you looked at a satellite photo from the early 90s, you could see that this Sutherland and McGol property we're here talking about tonight, and Innesbrook was basically flat marble. And the topography really hasn't changed very much. It's between 0 and 3% slopes, which means that water doesn't move quickly through it. Most of the existing site drainage drains through existing lake and wetland areas on the site. That'll be, as I said, improved by the provision of a large lake in the middle. There's limited outfall capacity, and we've heard and seen through LDNT and in the record, some of the existing problems that Sutherland has, and further downstream, the James Taylor neighborhood has and has had to deal with for quite a few years. And then there are four surface soils. If you, the easiest way to think about it is, a layer of clay exists under Sutherland, under this property, and under James Taylor. And that makes water infiltration very difficult, which leaves a lot of the water on the surface longer than you'd normally be able to. And those are the conditions that we're having to deal with. So with that, I'm going to ask Pat Dominic to come up and talk about the design, the redesign, and the redesign again of stormwater in the property.
I'm Pat Dominic with Saab, Wilson &amp; Lingo, 608 South Third Street, Louisville 40202. This is the central issue, I think, in terms of developing the property. A lot of times, we're dealing with roadway issues, capacity issues, compatibility issues, a lot of times with different use. In this particular neighborhood, drainage is the primary concern. And I want Cliff to lead the slide up because the last two bullet points, the frequent flooding in the James Taylor neighborhood downstream of Sutherland. This was the fundamental constraint in terms of developing the property. When we first sat down with MSD and talked about drainage solutions for the property, it was reinforced to us, you guys got to find a different way to manage your stormwater, either take it to the river or find some other mechanism. But you cannot take any stormwater to the James Taylor neighborhood. That's Shirley Bass, Dorock Avenue, it's just about, geographically, I guess, kind of south of the subject property. So that was a fundamental constraint we had. In fact, MSD said you cannot get an approval from us unless you manage your stormwater on-site and mitigate that runoff. The second item I want to point out, too, is that last bullet point. And as we got into this, and after meeting with the neighbors on January 15, I received numerous photos, I know staff did, too. And there are a lot of photos of flooded yards, flooded streets, a lot of backyards, front yards. And I think a lot of that has to do, and we did some testing to verify this, we did some soil testing on our site that indicated what Cliff mentioned, that about the first five feet of this soil is, I wouldn't even call it clay, it's more of a, it's a very plastic, plastic kind of soil, that simply does not percolate. The water will sit there, and it will sit there for extended periods of time. So we were aware of all of that, and particularly the limited outlets that this neighborhood had. Let me talk about the different alternatives we pursued, and we pursued several. The first option, and the preferred option, I think, from MSD, and even as I told the neighbors at the meeting on the 15th, I said, our preferred solution is to take our stormwater directly to the river. That wasn't pie in the sky, it wasn't wishful thinking on our part. We thought we had some very realistic opportunities to pursue that. Number one is the red arrow on here is actually an existing easement that we have through the Riverfields Garden Brown Preserve property. But it's a private easement, and there were certain restrictions on that. For example, we couldn't increase the size of the pipe, and that sort of prohibited us from using the easement as it. There was a second option, a purple line on here. We had some discussions, the applicant had some discussions with Riverfield, he said, okay, we've got this easement that cuts through you in the red area there, we'll go ahead and abandon that, we'll relocate the easement to the northern part of your property where it's out of the way, kind of remote, and it'll be on the property line instead of really running right through the middle of the property, which is what happens with that red corner. And the third option was with an adjoining property owner just to the north. I know our applicant made very generous offers for easements for all three of those scenarios, and all three of those scenarios were rejected. So we go back to the drawing board. This particular plan, you'll note, does not have the lake, does not have the detention basin on it. If we were going to take our stormwater directly to the river, there wouldn't have been any need for us to do any stormwater management on-site. As we started to look at some other options, the retention lake actually did a lot of very good things for the development. It not only creates some additional amenity area, we lose about 10 lots because of the lake we construct, we intend to construct, but it also meets water quality requirements that MSD has, and allows us to provide significant detention benefits. If you can see the numbers there, on the normal development following MSD's normal rules, we would normally only need to provide about 3.0, I think the number's on the plan there somewhere, about 3.3 acre-feet of storage. We're providing 8.9 acre-feet of storage, which is 270%, almost three times the amount we're required to do. What that does is, it chokes down the amount of runoff leaving the site to a very small diameter pipe. And in the initial case, let me go back to this, in this particular option, this was our initial proposal that included onsite infiltration. And we have a lot of experience with that, and it's part of MSD's policy to try to infiltrate stormwater wherever we could. We just ran into the difficulty here of being in the wellhead protection area with the Louisville Water Company's major investment in drinking water supply, and that became a real obstacle, I think, for the, for the water company. And, you know, there's no, there's no way we can combat that, that argument successfully. So we withdrew that option. I do want to point out that this plan did receive MSD approval. It did get stamped, was signed off, it did meet the requirements of MSD in terms of infiltration. So this was the first option that we had of a So this was the first option that we had of, of, of a, of a plan that received approval from MSD. What that said was, we were, again, not discharging any additional runoff to the James Taylor neighborhood. So with infiltration out, we started to look at some other options. And this is an exhibit, a drainage exhibit that, that shows the MSD storm system. You can see the Breakers at Prospect is labeled there. And if you look down into the corner, down in this area, do we have a pointer, does this have a pointer on it? I'll just point to it here with the mouse. There's an outlet right here across this property. And what it does is it gets into a small section of Southern, of Sutherland and actually discharges in daylight down into the Ohio River floodplain behind some Sutherland lots. There's a fairly steep draw. And it actually goes down and, and discharges into Hayes Kennedy Park. This drainage, again, bypasses, this is a closer view of what that looks like. This drainage bypasses the, the James Taylor neighborhood also. Let me talk about the benefit of the detention we provided because it's important in this context. This is an existing storm drainage system. Most of the downstream pipes that discharge where it says storm outlet, I believe that's a 24-inch storm system. Even though we're taking a large area from our development through this system, the stormwater retention lake allows us to reduce that runoff. I think as Commissioner Brown said, we have to reduce our peaks from a 10-year pre-developed rate to a hundred-year post-developed rate, an engineered jargon, but essentially, we're going to release this water at a trickle. And the best analysis I can give to the capacity of the system and the minimal impact it will have is the system can accommodate the additional flow. I don't have to increase any of those pipes to do that. So that by itself indicates that we are managing that runoff effectively. And again, this proposal did receive MSD stamp on, on August sixth. This is another view of the larger area showing the Hayes Kennedy Park. Let's see if I can point to that again. Maybe. If I can find them out. I got it, okay. All right, I got it, apologize. Yeah, here is the outlet right here. And basically what happens to that drainage, you can see there are park facilities here. There's parking, there's some tennis courts, there's a softball field right here, there's a wetland area right here, and there's a culvert under Bass Drive that in discussions with Jason Canuel from the park, is all silted over and doesn't particularly drain very well. But drainage from our development and from Sutherland initially, you have to keep in mind, Sutherland's already draining that, through that, through that safe corridor. But basically, the drainage will extend down into this corner of the property. This is Louisville Water Company, I think, Water Bonds. And then there's a paved ditch here that eventually gets out to the river. So we think this was an excellent stormwater solution. I think it helps mitigate some of the concerns that the Sutherland neighborhood has had. It certainly, it certainly eliminates any impact to the James Taylor neighborhood and Shirley, Bass, and Durock Avenue areas, which was our prime concern. I'll let Cliff come up and finish up.
Thank you. One thing I didn't, I failed to mention at the beginning of our presentation is, obviously, we agree with the staff recommendation. We've reviewed the staff report, and agree with the conditions of approval. And just a moment, I'm going to tell you about another condition of approval that we have, we have agreed to go with, the neighboring neighborhood of Innisbrook concerning entrance. So as I said at the beginning of this, this, the Breakers provides an opportunity for custom home building in Prospect. We expect these, these homes will, obviously, they'll be compliant with our land development code in terms of height and size and all the things that go into that. But these are going to be verified homes that are, that are certainly compatible with the homes in the surrounding neighborhoods of Sutherland and Innisbrook. With regard to the condition of approval, as you can see here, just want to read this into the record to make sure we get it right. There shall be no signage other than required street signage for the Breakers at Prospect at the Innisbrook slash Sutherland Farm Road entrance at US Highway 42 or along any portion of Sutherland Farm Road except within the limits of the approved subdivision. Sidage on Sutherland Farm Road shall be restricted to two stone pillars, one on each side of the drive and shall not exceed 10 feet in height. That design came from the fact that there are existing gates to the property where the, where the property has an existing farm road that comes off Sutherland Farm Road. Those gates are about 10 feet tall, the pillars on either side. So a new, a new set of pillars will be located at the public road entrance to, to the proposed This is just the latest, I think this is the latest version of the plan, you've seen this before, I'm going to just kind of pop through here. To summarize our request, and I know we've got plenty of other speakers, so I don't want to take up more time than I need to, and if you don't mind, Madam Chair, I'd like to reserve the balance of our time in the rebuttal. This subdivision is about half as dense as it could be. It is providing two and a half, two and three quarter of the required retention. We have connected to every road that we're required to connect to. All of the lots are at or above the required lot size. And we are not impacting features in a way that would violate the land development code or the subdivision regulations. Taken together, the evidence that we've provided to you, the evidence that is contained in your staff report, including the agency reviews from the Metropolitan Sewer District, Department of Public Works slash Transportation Plan, we have demonstrated to you that we comply with the requirements of the land development code and the subdivision regulations. For that reason, I would ask that you approve the preliminary subdivision plan for the Breakers at Prospect. I'm happy to take any questions. Pat's available for questions. And if there are no questions, I'll be happy to sit down and, as I said, reserve the rest of my time for rebuttal.
Questions, please?
Cliff, it looked like there's an existing access easement that services property now. What is the plan for that? Is it going to be abandoned?
It'll be abandoned.
And it'll just be open space?
I think that's going to be up to the, up to the folks at the dis-brogess appointments.
Oh, it's going to be on the ground?
Yeah.
On note of four of the plan, it says that additional easements may be required, that's for the stormwater. Is that the easement, is that shown on the plan here?
I'm going to have Pat come up and answer that one.
Yes, Commissioner Thompson, it is shown on the plan. Let me go back here. Okay. There is a blue line right through here, I believe, down one of these two lot lines. I can't, I can't quite make it out myself, but.
It's between 10 and 11.
Turn that out on the, in the copy, is that right? Yeah, let, let me state that for the record. That connection is between lots 10 and 11, yes. Yes.
And just to clarify, that does go, that, that easement goes into another property that's owned by Breakers, and then ultimately into an MSD system. Chief Carlson. I apologize, it might be easier for me to see him. Pretty easy.
I had to think it back up to that slide where you were showing us the ball fields work, that one right there. That red line easement, where is it on that? There. That's right through here. Okay, and that goes all the way down to the river, that's, yeah, that's, that's sort of a ravine, for lack of a better term, but it's a stream valley that, boy, it's hard to control. But that kind of discharges right down here into this low lying area. There's that ditch that I spoke with Mr. Canuel about, and there's a wetland right, right in through here, and that's the softball field right there. So that's where we're coming out. Is that all gravity fed, or is there any pumping involved? There's no pumping involved. Is that line gradable for pumping if at some point in time pumping is needed? I believe, I believe we have a gravity solution here, Commissioner Carlson, to do that. Okay. And this is very similar question that I asked the MSD people. If there was a civil engineer that was acting on behalf of any interested party, when you prepared your final plans for drainage, if they were to request copies of that which would be submitted to MSD, are you willing to do that? Or are you going to say now that, do the MSD or the American side? Let us answer that rebuttal if we can. Okay.
Chief, if I could just add on to Pat's answer there. You can see the stormwater outlet here. This is, this is logic without that utility turned on. This is another map that we obtained from MSD showing where the storm sewers go. So as you can see, that storm sewer was going to come underground, and then it comes out off the property here. This is existing drainage that's coming from Sutherland now, and goes into the park. Yeah. Goes into the park, and then comes through here down to the river. So that's, that is essentially an existing condition, but we're just putting some additional So with that, as I said, we agree with the staff report, with the condition of approval, with the one additional condition of approval that we, that I read into the record. We think that the evidence we've heard so far, the evidence that's been submitted both to the planning commission's staff, including the stamps of MSD and Public Works, evidence our compliance with the land development code and with the subdivision regulations. We think in that case, you are compelled to approve the subdivision, and would ask you to go ahead and follow along with that. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll continue on with those in support, and if some of you are only here for questions, you could let us know that. And again, I will direct your attention to the microphone in the back when you have your own PowerPoint presentation. Ron Thomas? Don Bright? Sir, do you wish to speak? Do you wish to speak? And Dan McMillan will be next, if you want to move closer to the microphone, you might. Please start with your name and address.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chairperson and the Planning Commission. My name's Colleen Walker. I'm a Kentucky real estate broker with EXP Realty. My office is at 5924 Timber Ridge Road in Prospect, Kentucky. I've been selling real estate in Kentucky as a real estate broker for over 20 years. In 2008, the property was marketed for sale by the, by the family. I represented a developer at that time that made an opportunical calls as a plan to catch housing community with the density of 150 homes, which zoning and utility would have allowed. However, we were told that it was not a good time to present the future for the sale of it. In November of 2018, the opportunity was presented to me again. This time I had a developer that wants to plan a large, single-family housing community, retain the existing home, and plan for not the original 81 lots, but reduce it to 71 home sites versus 150 homes that would have been allowed by the density with the utility involved with this 49 acres. The opportunity for the single-family homes should be celebrated. The Breakers should be celebrated as it gives us an opportunity in Prospect to create a lovely neighborhood, complementing the existing communities of Innisbrook, Sutherland, the Estates of Honey Creek, On River Road, and on Cover Bridge Road, plus presents a boost for the city of Prospect and the commerce of our city. In addition, it retains the existing McCall home with acreage. My hope is that you see that the Breakers need your approval this evening, and I thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you. I'd like to ask that everyone please silence your cell phones so that the commissioners can hear the testimony. Dan McMillan?
Yes, my name is Dan McMillan. I'll be real honest with everyone here tonight, I didn't plan on getting up here and speaking, but now that I'm here.
Could you give us your address, please?
Yes, 1600 Riverside Drive, Prospect, Kentucky 40059.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Now that I'm here, just as a citizen here in the community, I see what the developers are proposing, and to me, it looks like they've gone above and beyond what they are proposing, and to me, it looks like they've gone above and beyond what they really need to do to present a pretty awesome development. You look at the density, the lots are cut and have, I think it could probably be a lot worse, and to turn something down that meets all codes doesn't make any sense. As a developer, you want to get something approved, but you have to give the tape with the community. It sounds like they have met, gone back to the drawing board, doing everything that they need to do to make this thing go. I think it's a pretty good-looking development, and good luck to you guys.
Thank you. Ken McMillan, and on deck is Sam Griffin.
Hello, my name is Ken McMillan. I live at 1118 Riverside Drive, Prospect, Kentucky. Yesterday, I was out on the river, and actually going by this period, and I was wondering when this development was going to come up, or what's happening. I happened to see a firm that they told me about it, so I wanted to come and see this. I work in construction, sales manager for an East Place company, so this is a little self-serving, because I'm in favor of development. I'm not always in favor of development. There was a development recently on Riverside Road, a whole team that had way more houses than should have been in this development, I stood up against it. This development, I'm in the suburbs, just listening to everything that was said tonight, I think they're doing the right thing, the size of the houses. When you look at the pictures of these houses, I mean, people who live in Innisbrook and Sutherland, I think we can't beat what type of homes are going to build this development. We want top business executives to come to the world, we need a place for them to live. Prospect is having a place for them to live. This development looks like a great development, so I'm in favor of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sam Griffin?
Hello, Sam Griffin, 12804 Crestview Cove, Prospect, Kentucky 40059. My family, we have an independent business in Prospect for 10 years now, and have lived in Prospect for about 20 years. The developer really has gone above and beyond as far as communicating with the public, doing adhering to the needs of what they want, and after seeing the plan and seeing how she's really done a great job with the water retention, getting things, make sure things don't go to the Taylor neighborhood, for it, I think it's great for business in Prospect, and I'm looking forward to having folks in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who's speaking, or has reported this meeting? Ma'am, if you speak, would you use speaker's form, please?
Okay, you should have it. It's probably in your stack somewhere. But I'll give you them. Jamie Cox, Vice Cox in Townsend, 2303 River Road, Suite 301, did you find it?
Yeah, I had you gather those.
Oh, okay. Suite 301, Louisville, Kentucky 40206. I represent the Innisbrook Homeowners Association, and when we first say that their preference would be that no development go on on this tract of land, they would love it if it stayed beautiful and green with a single, large, beautiful residence, but they understand that realistically, that's not going to happen. And so assuming that there is going to be some development at some point, they couldn't hope for a nicer development than what Ms. Gillis Ann has proposed. She and Mr. Dominic have been very responsive to the homeowners association and the board of directors. They've met several times, they've answered questions, they've offered compromises, like the conditions of approval that Mr. Ashburner read into the record tonight. Reasons why Innisbrook initially became concerned about the development were issues that we talked about tonight, drainage. Also, they were concerned that East Place would not be opened up, and that all traffic would be routed through Sutherland Farm Road. The East Place issue has been resolved, and in order to understand the drainage issues, Innisbrook Homeowners Association hired an independent engineer, Mr. Mike Evans, who's also here tonight, to take a look at Mr. Dominic's plans. So Mr. Evans has provided a lot of backup on Mr. Dominic's plans, has answered a lot of questions at Innisbrook. They've gotten comfortable with the state of the drainage, and that it's not going to exacerbate their existing drainage issues that they have there. So I'm just here to convey that Innisbrook's position to you all tonight. If you have any questions, or any questions for Mr. Evans.
Thank you. Scott Reed? And Mr. Evans, if you want to get a seat.
Hello, everybody, and hello, planning commission, thank you for your service. I'm Scott Reed, interneural councilman of the 16th district. Just a couple of things, and I'm listed as an other, because I can't really take an official position. The interneural council will not see this, so this is where I come to the planning and zoning committee, which I'm a member of, but I won't come to the full council yet, so we have no vote, and I just wanted to make that clear for the record. Our office has been in contact with the city, county attorney, Missouri, and MSD regarding the development, and I haven't been getting the regular updates until tonight, so I'm very pleased with some of the things that I'm hearing. From my perspective, I'd like to assure you, first and foremost, that this is not going to affect the Negroes, James Taylor, and Sutherland's. A little concerned about the fact that East Kennedy is well up in the area, and we're going to be diverting some of the stormwater to East Kennedy, but anxious a little bit more about that to move forward. And I did not state my address, I live at 4620 Beetwood Court, this is Louisville 40241. It looks like a nice development, and quite frankly, it could be a lot worse, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mike Evans?
Mike Evans, PPLS, 6625 Columbia Avenue, Evansville, Indiana 4775. As Dink said, I put the plan, and really find the plan to be beyond what most civil engineers would do in order to develop this type of subdivision. And I'm happy to answer any of the questions.
Thank you. All right, that's all I have signed up in support, and three that were signed up as others. Is there anyone else here who's speaking, or has reported?
I actually...
You'll have to speak from the microphone.
Hi. I can put down, but I am an other. I think it looks like a nice subdivision.
Could you give us your name?
Oh, Anne Haggerty, Sutherland subdivision, 40059. I think it's really nice. I think my biggest concern, being that I live in Sutherland, is the excess traffic that's going to be coming through. I live on Wyndham, and so I'm very concerned about the traffic and the maintenance of the roads, but that's probably more of a subdivision issue. My question to you all, I'm still very concerned about the runoff at the, down by the park. I thought, but it didn't look like that red line went by the water tower, the water. So I'm kind of confused there, and the one gentleman did say that that was going to be, there was not going to be any kind of pump situation, it was all going to be a gravity, but it's very, very flat there, so I really question the gravity issue on that runoff. I think there needs to be something looked at, where there's the possibility, possibly a pump to drain that water, because that is so flat there, I don't see how that is really going to work. And that's all I have to say. But it does look like a beautiful subdivision, I'm very happy with the amendments that they have made, too.
Did you put 700 Henry Place on your speakerphone?
Yes, I did.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak as other, or in support? All right, Commissioner, any questions? All right, we will move to opposition, and again, I will call Jane, the speaker, and who is to speak after them, so you can save time by moving into place. Randy Strobo? And Scott, sign, we'll follow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Randy Strobo, Strobo Park, LLC, 239 South Fifth Street, Suite 917, Louisville, Kentucky 40202. My firm represents the Sutherland Community Association, Inc., which is the homeowners association for the Sutherland subdivision. So first, I wanted to say thank you to everybody. It was our petition, Sutherland's petition, that made us all come out here tonight, so I wanted to thank Joel Doc, Julia Williams, for all their hard work to help us make this happen. Of course, thank you to, and the rest of the staff, thanks to the planning commission members. We know you don't like to get out of your homes sometimes, but I think this issue, and this particular development application, or subdivision application, warrants getting out of this community, as you can see by all these people here today. I saw a lot of hands up earlier that wanted to make a comment, so I'm going to keep my comments brief as well. But I first wanted to address a few things that were asked already of the developer, and I think of MSD. The first question I wanted to address was about Commissioner Carlson. Commissioner, you asked, is there an opportunity for other engineers to take a look at the final construction plans? And you didn't get a good answer, because the answer is no. At this point, after this, after tonight, there will be no other chance for the public to comment on this plan. This is it. So I think it's critical that we have all of our folks out here tonight, we have Sutherland out here tonight, we have Sutherland's board, we have a lot of people here that are, quite frankly, angry, scared, and afraid, because they want to keep their property safe, and they're fearful that this development could harm them. And what the developer has proposed and submitted so far doesn't really alleviate any of those fears. We'll hear more about that later from other people, including our expert civil engineer that's here tonight. So to answer another question, Commissioner Carlson, we do have a civil engineer here tonight. Sutherland did retain an expert to take a look at this plan, and to tell us, is this a good plan? Do we need to be worried about what's going to happen? And he is general, I'm going to let him come up here and speak, but generally what he's going to say is, I have no clue, because what's been provided to the planning commission in these, the plans provided to the planning commission, don't give us enough information to figure out whether or not Sutherland and the Taylor community are going to be impacted by this development. And we all know, I think everybody here agrees, the developer, the planning commission, the staff, that there's MSD, that there's been flooding, stormwater issues downstream from this proposed development for decades, for decades. And the reason for that is because of the development. So development approved by the planning commission, stamped by MSD, is causing a lot of this flooding, a lot of this stormwater problems, and to be quite frank, a lot of that is from Sutherland, and Sutherland knows that. Sutherland has been trying to deal with this problem for years as well. They've been trying to work with the community, they've been trying to work with the Taylor community, they've been trying to work with MSD and others, to try to figure out and solve this problem. They contacted council member Reed, who's here tonight, and I appreciate Mr. Reed for being here. I think it's critical that council members come to things like this, even though he's neutral, which is the perfect, that's fine, that's what he should be. But in communication with his office, even council member Reed noted that MSD has had a plan to deal with stormwater in the Taylor community for years. It's an $800,000 plan, but they haven't done it. Why? Maybe cost, I don't know, but it hasn't been addressed yet. The plans that have been submitted, well, let me go back to another issue. And we hear this from developer side a lot, sometimes I make this argument, to a certain extent, but when developers come in with a subdivision approval, it is different from a zone change, it is different from a variance, it is different from a waiver. What the developer argued was that you have an obligation, as long as it meets the LDC, all the requirements of the LDC, that you all have an obligation to approve that plan. I don't, to an extent, that's true, but it's not the full story. So what I want to show you, and I'm going to skip through this, because you all have already seen this. There are certain things that you all do have a ministerial obligation to approve if it's presented to you. For example, if, as they are here, they're proposing residential units, they're proposing homes, in an area-zoned residential. If you all, as a planning commission, cannot deny them the right to build residential homes in this area, because it's a residential, that's a ministerial duty. The same thing applies to lot sizes, to density, to FAR, floor area ratio, as long as they comply with those obligations, you all have a duty to say, yes, you can do that, with one big exception, I'm going to get that in a second. But the other ministerial duty that you all have, as a planning commission, and as a body that approves stormwater plans, stormwater designs, as does MSD, you all, along with MSD and everybody else that has approval authority, also has a ministerial duty to non-negatively construct, maintain, and repair the sewer system. That is an obligation every local government body has, that has authority over stormwater sewer systems. You have an obligation, a ministerial duty, to make sure those are constructed appropriately. We didn't hear that from the developer, because they didn't say that, but that is a state, that's case law in Kentucky, this is Kentucky Supreme Court. There are other decisions that apply this directly to MSD. Those are published cases, but that case does cite this one, which is a Supreme Court case, amazing city of downtown Sutherland. So there is a ministerial duty also, to make sure that these sewers are constructed in the appropriate way. But beyond all that, you all still have discretion, even if they meet the LDC and the requirements of the LDC, you all have the authority and the discretion to still say no, or to say, we need more information. The example I'd like to say, and you can see it here, this is your own land development code, section 7.1.20, 7.1.40, subdivision regs promote the public health, safety, and welfare of Jackson County. You guys can read this. So you have to ensure that the public health, safety, and welfare, not just of the development, not just of the developer's property, but of the surrounding community, is done in an orderly fashion that doesn't impair the health, safety, and welfare of citizens. Again, the planning commission is empowered to do all things necessary and proper, the same proper is kind of taken from our US Constitution, there's a long history there, but necessary and proper to administer and enforce these regulations. This planning commission can do everything necessary and proper to administer and enforce these regulations. The example I'm going to use is an example that you all did quite recently, in the Echo Trail subdivision case. I think that's 18 subdivision, 1881, Joel will probably know. That was a case around the Floyd Sport area, where there was a subdivision approval, it wasn't a zone change, and allegedly, because I was on the other side of that, I say allegedly, that case was currently in appeal, the developer met all of the LDC requirements, but there was a sticking issue, and that issue was traffic. Traffic isn't stormwater, but like traffic, in that case, stormwater is kind of a limiting factor here. Traffic in that case allowed, or the planning mission used this discretion, in that case, to go back to, not to the drawing board, but to go back and explore the issue further. You all didn't approve it that night, when they asked, when the developer asked you to approve that plan, and it wasn't necessarily anything the developer did. The problem was, the development, as allowed under the land development code at that time, was too big for the traffic, the road infrastructure in that part of Jackson County, and you all recognized that. So you said, let's send this back, let's take a look, harder look at it, let's have some meetings, let's figure out how to address this problem, and you did. You came up with a solution, again, that my client didn't agree with, we all went back and tried to figure it out. That hasn't been done here at all. Sutherland has never been consulted by anybody. Sutherland, the Taylor community, we don't represent the Taylor community, but Sutherland, Taylor community are directly impacted by the flooding and stormwater issues that exist today, and those stormwater and flooding issues are the result of planning and development that... that has happened over the past two decades. So again, my client is, wants to make sure that they are safe. They want to make sure that their property and themselves are not harmed by any development. They want to make sure and use every authority and every chance they can to make sure that they are going to be protected. The planning commission's job, part of their job, is to protect the community. Part of MSD's job is to protect the community. And they're asking you all to do that tonight. If not to deny this plan, to go back and work out what is exactly going to happen to the downstream properties from the site, because you'll hear from our civil engineer and our expert and our PhD that there is not enough information here for him to say that they will be protected, because they won't. And this is going to be my last point. The planning commission is independent from MSD. MSD is an independent municipal corporation. They have their own agenda at times, and a lot of that overlaps with what the planning commission does and what the city needs to do, and what they need to do for their rate fares and customers. But their mission does not always align with what the planning commission does. And what you all have done so far to look at floodwaters and stormwater in this case is to say, one sentence, preliminary approval has been received by MSD. That's the only thing on this entire report that talks about stormwater, that talks about any type of approval. To me, that's not enough for a development like this. There's way too much at stake for the downstream properties, and they're asking the planning commission to help them with that. And now it's Mr. Simonson, Dr. Simonson. Thank you all.
Thank you. My name's Scott Simonson, PhD. My address is 1091 Haynes Branch Road, Sistinville, West Virginia. And I was asked by Mr. Strobo, actually, pardon? Oh, 25320.
Thank you.
I was asked a few weeks ago by Mr. Strobo to look at the initial design that was the infiltration basin. And that I felt was a really bad idea, others did, and that that plan was taken off the table. Then this plan, I guess, was submitted last week, August 6th, and approved on the same day, I believe, by the MSD. And I was asked to review that plan to determine if there was concern for the neighborhood, Sutherland neighborhood, about this plan, about stormwater from the plan, or other off-site downgrade in receivers, potential stormwater. My initial review of this plan and the previous plan were fairly obvious ones, and I think most people would look at these plans and think the same thing as would you, in that you've got an area that already has a stormwater problem, clearly you are altering the hydrologic balance, as we would say in engineering, you're changing that flow, and in this case, you're adding stormwater into the system. So that's a concern. Is it a non-engineerable concern? I don't think so. Other issues were this current plan adds storm flow into an existing storm drain in the, in the neighborhood that I find, I doubt was designed for additional flow. And I noticed that this conceptual plan, and I guess my biggest concern is, as Mr. Strobo talked about, my biggest concern is that there's really no information here for me to go off of. I was asked to make an engineering evaluation of this plan, this preliminary plan, and there's really nothing there to go on. I've got the drawing that was, that was submitted on the 6th as the, as the plan, and in one, I can't remember what section of it, it's got some formulas, and doesn't even explain where those numbers come from, what they're evaluating. I took a stab at it and then realized, well, there should be an explanation, I don't know. It doesn't match up with other parts of the drawing. And so I've heard, and I told Mr. Strobo clearly that I don't know if this is bad or that this might be the greatest design in the world. And so I was, I was thinking I would come here tonight, and I told Mr. Strobo that I may get information tonight that, that says this is great. I have not gotten that information. I've heard things like, very small diameter pipe, well, is that four inch, eight inch, 10 inch, and what is the design criteria for that pipe? I've heard, well, we've got 270% capacity of what and how, what's the freeboard of the pond, how is, what's the mechanism from trickling that water from the pond or the retention basin into the current system? And the biggest concern, and one that I have to assume somebody is addressing, is this idea that, well, we have to show that peak flow is not increased by this subdivision for whatever it was, 10, 50, 100-year storm events, 500-year storm events. That is a modeling exercise that takes a little bit of math, takes a little bit of time, is completely doable, and I would like to assume that somebody's done it, but I haven't seen it. And honestly, and this is not, I don't know anything about MSD or how they work, but I find it difficult that somebody could evaluate a model in the day that they got the plan and approved the plan. Impossible, no. And maybe they had a bunch of information that I simply don't have. So the point is that I was asked to evaluate this, and it's hard to, there's just not enough information available. And I've asked several times, is there, can I, can I seek the homework, basically? By the way, I was asked to give a little bit of background on my, or a little bit of information on my background, but 27-year engineer, private sector, state regulatory agencies, and currently in academia, professor at Mercer University. So I say things like, I'd like to see the homework, see the problem, see your work. I can't see the work. I can't evaluate this. I can say that the potential for harm here is very great. I'm an engineer. I firmly believe that most things have an engineering solution, but I cannot evaluate this supposed solution because there's nothing to evaluate. This is a conceptual design, or call it conceptual design, I guess, and I don't even think it meets that level of detail. This is, this is ideas. These are statements that are being made that I can't evaluate. I can't say whether it's good or bad, I can say again that the potential for harm is, is very great. I think that's, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Scherri. And Mimi Swenian.
Good evening. I'm Scott Scherri. I live in Sutherland, 40059. My comments tonight have not been discussed with anybody in Sutherland or anybody else, but I want to cover two things. Give you a quick background, I have 35 years as a registered engineer in Kentucky. I've managed the engineering permitting and construction of nine billion dollars of work throughout the state of Kentucky on large landfills, large power plants, large developments. I agree with this gentleman, there's not a lot of facts out there. So I've been looking up some statistics lately, well, we designed for a 100-year flood. Well, that 100-year flood occurred in 2018, as far as rainfall, record rainfall, 68 inches. But the highest rainfall for any given day occurred in the spring of 1997, over 10 and a half inches at Louisville. I doubt they've thrown that into their equation, but you can't see that. You really can't tell what they designed this to. So I just want to pair it with this gentleman to set it, there are no facts for anybody to make a rational decision on how to handle this. Now, when I got leave of design with national firms for landfills, we have to count for the 100-year flood, which again was 1997. And when we do that, we have large stormwater drains. I'm talking about large reservoirs that are empty, not a pretty lake that's full and has no additional capacity. So unless this new lake they're going to build is going to be an empty mud hole, I'm trying to understand how they're going to take a 10-inch rain, it's Louisville, and account for that. So that's all I'm going to say on drainage. Second thing I want to say, and I appreciate the time, we moved to Sutherland from Indiana in January this year. It's a great neighborhood. We brag about how we can walk the dogs around. We did it in quality of life. They say they meet the mental standards, they probably do. And I will say, it looks like a pretty fabulous design. Problem is it's landlocked. And so when you take 72 homes, and you say everybody probably has two cars they drive, that's 150, then they have to come home, that's 300. They have service vehicles, most people probably go out of their home more than once. You're talking about 500 cars a day that are going to pass my house on Linda Parkway. That is not the lifestyle that the body into. And I don't think it's the lifestyle anybody in Sutherland body into, because not only is this going to open up everybody from this development, but I have a feeling that a lot of people in Nissburger are going to cut through Sutherland to get the river broke. So now we're talking six or 700 cars a day, and that is not an exaggeration, that is life, that is a real number. Okay? So what you're asking Sutherland to do is hope that their design calculations were somewhere that somebody can look into. Sir, I appreciate you asking those questions up front, could somebody look at the design? It'd be nice to run some calculations, but I don't think a full lake is going to be pretty. Yeah, it'd be pretty, but it won't hold a 10-inch rain. And when you get lots that are up, a little over 9,000 square feet, that's about 20% of an acre, maybe 25% if you want to go higher than that. Time you put these big, pretty houses on it, driveway and sidewalks, I don't know what's going to soak the rain in. You've got roads, driveways, and houses, hard structure. There's not going to be a lot of green space except for down over the hill on the river. So I don't know where all this water's going to go, but somebody needs to look at that before we just blanket approve it, in my opinion. But I hope to get back to quality of life, because this is really going to affect people in Sutherland, especially me on the bring over Linda Parkway. It's already a little busy, but another five to seven hundred homes, be it realistic, a day, every day for the next 20 years, so that three or four people can make some money, is a little upsetting. So thank you for your time.
We have about 16 people to speak and about 50 minutes to do it, so please hold the clapping down, you're just taking up that time.
Did you say 16 people and how much time?
54 minutes.
54 minutes, thank you.
And Pat Hoffman is on deck.
My name is Mimi Swenian. I'm executive director of Riverfields, a 60-year-old land trust advocacy group. Our office is at the Butcher Town Market, Suite 2151201, Story Avenue, 40202. I want to make a, what was that? Sorry. I want to make an important point to the planning commission. As you all know, I've been working on planning commission issues for about 45 years. I have never seen a developer propose a development and have a neighborhood plan when they didn't have a drainage plan. The night of the neighborhood plan on January 15th, Pat Dom and I referred to this, in fact, he did not come up, he did not announce they were going to take the drainage to the river. What he said to me afterwards is, Mimi, we have no stormwater drainage plan. That's why we're in this fix, because this is an almost impossible site to drain, and because of the geology and because of the clay, neighborhoods such as an African-American neighborhood that would never have been ignored, may I just say, if it had been white, and that had nothing to do with the developer, it has to do with decision makers. And I believe that with all of my heart. That neighborhood and those landowners have lost hard-earned money by their houses being flooded, by mold being in their houses, and all because MSD has promised repeatedly to resolve those issues, and they have not been resolved. That is my first point. The second point, just as a small addendum, is I want to compliment Joel Doc. This has been an extremely strenuous, strenuous issue because the drainage plan was not resolved before the plan was approved, and we have gone through, I think this is our sixth decade drainage plan. But Mr. Doc said in the staff report, or said in his presentation, the site is surrounded by subdivisions. Look at this picture. Ladies and gentlemen, I rest my case. This is Garvin Brown Preserve, which is a 46-acre riverfront preserve that is managed by Riverfields to provide both public access and a rural experience in expansive wildlife habitat. The property was underwritten by Laura Lee Brown, who grew up on this farm and loved it. She and her family gave about $1.3 million so it could be preserved for the public. They didn't do it for their own private use, but for the public. This is the 25th anniversary of this preserve. This is one of the four sides of this development. For a quarter century, Garvin Brown Preserve has provided open space, wildlife habitat, scenic views, and public natural recreation to generations of the public, residents and visitors and our citizens. We own a dozen properties that are managed for the benefit of the public, and we've concerned almost 2,200 acres forever through conservation easements. But this preserve is the largest property owned by Riverfields. We are an immediate contiguous neighbor of this development. It is on the O'Hanay River in Prospect, and is preserving valuable riverfront land that includes a diversity of habitats and uses. It is directly adjacent through Hayes Kennedy Park, and the Parks Department immediately gave us public access through the park. The point of this preservation was for the public benefit, not for anybody's private benefit. This property has been owned by Riverfields since 1994. It's open to the public from dawn to dusk. Dusk, when it's flooded, which is many times in a five-year period, we pay for the cleanup. It's open every day. It is managed for multiple public benefits, including recreation, wildlife habitat, floodway protection, and preservation of historic agricultural vistas and water quality. Most particularly at this moment, I want to talk about the wetlands at Garvin Brown Preserve. These wetlands are in the upper, let's see, southwest corner of the preserve. They are immediately contiguous, and I'll later show you a picture, to where the storm drainage currently will be released. Now, may I just say to the developer, this is a much, this general storm drainage resolution is an improvement over the last one, a vast improvement. However, we just saw the plan on Friday. I received it in my inbox at 3:00, didn't get to read it until 5:00. We have had no time to review the storm drainage plan. But it, you'll see in a minute that what happens is it's released just at the western property line of Garvin Brown Preserve, where there is five acres of hardwood wetlands, increasingly rare in the river corridor, that shares its flow with wetlands at Hayes Kennedy Park. I'll refer to this later, but the Parks Department knew nothing about this until I contacted a now-retired member, many of you know Lisa Hyden, who got the information directly to the Parks Department. They were stunned to learn that this was going to happen, and they need more information. This wetland provides important habitat to diverse wildlife nesting areas for ducks, herons, and other birds, but also projects for boy scouts and cub scouts, and a variety of other public interests. This wetland is connected to the wetlands on adjacent properties, including the wetlands at Hayes Kennedy Park, and it is in part, and let me just emphasize the word, dynamic hydrologic system that provides floodway protection and stormwater buffering. We've had no chance to understand how this outfall is going to impact these wetlands. Here's a picture of, let's see, is there? Oh, I'll use this, okay. Sorry, thank you. Here's Eric Hayes Kennedy Park. From what we can tell, right about here is where the water is released. Here is Riverfield's, Garvin Brown Preserve's property line, right here. And here you'll see this wetland. We only, again, I want to repeat, we only learned about this on Friday afternoon, about 10, eight hours, 10 hours before this hearing started. So our concern for the wetlands at Garvin Brown Preserve years ago led to a 1999 conservation easement that we negotiated. easement that we negotiated with NTS, and that easement preserves the vegetation and prevents use of chemicals in the adjoining areas of the Sutherland subdivision, the slopes of which come down directly to our wetlands. Here you can see the pink area of our conservation easement, which in fact ends here. This is incorrect, it does not go this far. I now really wish it did. This green area is the current wetlands, and those wetlands, as you saw in the previous slide, run down here. And then the storm drainage comes here, although it does look like in the map that there is, this is, there's a, there's property that is higher, however, the water comes here. And then, of course, from what I can understand and have seen, having managed this property for twenty-five years, it flows dynamically, flows dynamically along this ridge, which is right below the river buff. For many years, the public and volunteers from across our community have helped to maintain the Garvin Brown Wetland. We conserve property in perpetuity. Perpetuity is a long time. We have committed to ensure that the natural areas and open spaces like Garvin Brown Preserve are conserved to be around for future generations to enjoy. I thank you for your attention, and before I move on to other things, I invite you to please come on a walk there, and I'd love to be your hostess. So if you look at Garvin Brown Preserve, you'll see that if you do come there, you will be treated to beautiful views of the Ohio River as well as an iconic, really unusual rural agricultural landscape that surrounds the property to the north and east. Looking north, walkers see the bucolic scene and distinctive silo of the almost six-hundred-acre Wildwood Farm, which we've also protected forever, six hundred acres on a conservation easement. Then also looking east, they see what is now the McCall property or Sutherland Farm. Tens of thousands of regional citizens from all walks of life have and continue to use and enjoy this irreplaceable open space preserved for the public benefit, not for profit, I mean, not for somebody's profit, not for private individuals, but the public benefit. So the hardwood wetlands and the MSD approval of plans just released on Friday afternoon concern us. So let's go back, you can see this. So the hardwood wetlands are on the western, this is the western portion of Garvin Brown Preserve. They're increasingly rare. These wetlands have been recognized by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and state wetlands leaders for their very strong intact nature and value to the surrounding area. I don't believe that when MSD permitted it, as they called about that. We protected them for decades to shield them from harmful runoff that would hurt the shells of nesting birds and their eggs and lower the diversity within the wetlands plants. But now the wetlands that border then to the south, right here, these are the mountains. Finished discussing the western wetlands. And now, this is the southern wetlands here. I believe that's southern. This is the river northern. And we have met, had a number of meetings with the developer, who's been very open to conservation easement along the slopes here that would be similar, I'm sorry, I was wrong. I don't want, would have to go back to a slide, give me that Mr. Ashford had, we could go back to his site plan for the development. Thank you. Just to give you your positioning.
Site plan?
His site plan.
How much time do we have?
Forty-one minutes.
Can we get over to like three or four? Probably we can talk.
So here, this area right here abuts to Riverfield's Garvin Brown Preserve. The developer has discussed with us a conservation easement that would protect this area just as it does down here, and we hope that she is still willing to do that. Our critical concern tonight are two things. One is to request, Commissioner Carlson, questions about whether interested parties are able to have a review of the wetlands area, excuse me, of the storm drainage plan before it's approved is exactly our critical question. We would like an opportunity. We're not asking for anything but a review and input on the drainage plan before it's approved so that we can meet with MSD and we can explain to them what the issues are, and I think there would be a possibility to mitigate what the issues are. Our second, our last issue continues to be, I'm sorry, my third, I'm going to pass out letters that we've just received from the State Historic Preservation Officer. This is a letter from Craig Cox, State Historic Preservation Officer. He says he has received a review of a packet of information related to the above- referenced site, which is this site, to be developed, and this is his determination regarding the significance of the entire forty-nine acres of this site and its eligibility to the National Register of Historic Places. George Garvin Brown Farm, known as Sutherland, is a forty-nine-acre farm located on the Ohio River with structures and landscape features that were constructed between 1945 and 63. While younger in age than contributed elements associated with the country-states of Verterode, historic district located nearby, many of the same characteristics that define a gentleman farm type of the country-state is exhibited by the Sutherland Farm. It seems clear based on the design principles and the choice of firms, which is the Olmsted Design Firm, Massachusetts utilized to design the historic landscape, that the country-state's tradition is purposely followed by George Garvin Brown at Sutherland, and serves as an important later example. While Sutherland Farm has been significantly reduced in recent years, most character-defining structures and features appear to be largely intact. I will jump to the most important paragraph. It is the determination of this office that the Sutherland Farm is eligible under criteria C as distinguishable entity, gentleman farm, comprised of structures, dependencies, and landscape elements, and features that embody the distinctive characteristics of a tight period and method of construction, and that represents the work of a master, which is the Olmsted Brothers Firm. Sutherland Farm may also be eligible under National Register Criteria A and Criteria B for association with George Garvin Brown, an individual of demonstrable importance within local and state historic context. For planning purposes, we've determined that an appropriate National Register boundary for this property should include the entire remaining forty-nine acres associated with the historic property. So that is new information. Lastly, I would suggest that this body consider the points made by Mr. Strobo, that you have a ministerial duty to serve the public, and please consider the drainage impacts at the James Taylor Jacob School neighborhood, which have been exacerbated completely by the climate development that has taken place on this flat property with five feet of clay. Thank you.
We've been sitting here for two hours. We're going to take a ten-minute break, and we're going to stop and watch, and we will kick back out with Patricia Hudson, and Kirk Reuben will follow her. And Kurt Reiling will follow her. Patricia Huggins? And Stephen Stowers will follow her.
My name is Patricia Huggins. Sixty-five oh one Shirley Avenue in Prospect. Four zero zero five nine. I would hope not to have to speak at this meeting, but I feel that I must. The counterweight way that the objections to this development are ignored by MSD, the developer, the developer's attorney, and the engineering firm is just not acceptable. The facts as they exist are the Jacob Taylor subdivisions developed in the nineteen twenties because of a real need for African-American people who worked in this area to have somewhere to live. An entrepreneur by the name of James Taylor, all planned for Murray Shirley Hill in nineteen ninety-two, and began to sell lots to African-Americans in nineteen twenty-three so that they could build their homes and farm and own a piece of the great American dream. We had no flooding issues and it supported a whole group of proud industrious homeowners for decades. The Sutherland subdivision was developed in the nineteen nineties. MSD approves the stormwater drainage engineering plans for this development. Flooding issues began that we never previously had. The engineering firm hired by Sutherland's developer, NTS, was Savic, Wilson, and Linggo. Savic, Wilson, and Linggo is the same engineering firm that is contracted by the Breakers developer to design the stormwater drainage. My granddad, who by the way was the associate of Robert Worth Neum of the Louisville Neum in the early nineteen hundreds, used to say that you can't keep doing the same thing and expect different results. My father grew up on the Neum estate and attended Jacob's College School. This is personal to so many of us, but it is also important to the entire community. There have been countless efforts to make the flooding issues important to the Metropolitan Sewer District. We received everything from absolutely denying that they even had anything to do with the approval of Sutherland. Two, there was no money in the budget to fix the issue. We pay MSD charges to such every other homeowner in this city. And now they approved another development which will contribute to the issues that already exist. Water passing nowhere to go but in our neighborhood. When the development is built and the flooding is exacerbated and we complain, will MSD again shrug their shoulders and say, "We tried, it's not our fault." I appeal to every ounce of humanity that exists in all of you to not let the love of money destroy a close-knit community that has been around for a hundred years. It is equally important that you do what is right for the city of Prospect. Please vote no and not approve the Breakers development. At a minimum, please postpone this hearing until all parties involved at the proper time to thoroughly review the Breakers' completed stormwater drainage design. All parties would include historic James Taylor, Jacob School, and Sutherland Neighborhoods, River Fields, Case Kennedy Park, Louisville Cricket Club, Louisville Water Company, and any other properties adjacent to this proposed development. Thank you.
Stephen Stowers?
Yes, ma'am. One second.
While we've given that set up, if there are those who have turned in white forms or any of these other folks that are excited to speak, if you did not raise your hand when we bore in the speakers for tonight, would you please like a moment? Anyone? If you would stand up and raise your hand. Anyone else that wasn't here, please stand. Raise your arm and hand. Do you swear in affirmative testimony that you will provide the planning commission today as the truth? Thank you. Do you have a form that's not been turned in? If you give it to one of the staff over there, please.
Lieutenant Commissioner and all members of the Commission, my name is Stephen Stowers. That's seven zero zero one Wyndham Parkway, four zero zero five nine in Prospect. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight and thank you all obviously for your service here at the late meeting. My wife and I bought a lot in Sutherland in nineteen ninety-four and built in nineteen ninety-five. And I'm just gonna take very briefly because I'm not gonna duplicate what other people have covered. But I think it's important to notice that this picture here is where we bought our lots there with Firehacker. At the corner of Eads Place and Wyndham. And you can see Wyndham stops where my Jeep sat. And there was nothing there but trees. We didn't have drainage problems then, that was in nineteen ninety-four. The development was finally finished in, I think, ninety-six, ninety-seven. And I just wanna show you some pictures of, you know, Sutherland has storm sewers, Sutherland has curves, obviously. But the challenge has been that we're getting a tremendous amount of storm water drainage, you can see. And moving along, the interest should continue. This is, these are out of work, I apologize, but this is looking down on the Garber Ground Preserve in two thousand and eighteen. Obviously, that was a tremendous flooding area or time during that. The Spence Row right here is the, would be on the developer's proposed, you can see another angle here from the Garber Ground Reserve. That would be the bluff where part of the drawings will show some development. The real issue for Sutherland is, and I'm gonna show it here in just a second, we have multiple drains that come through Sutherland, including about a two-foot, four-foot wide creek that pushes through the west side of Sutherland into Durock and then ultimately makes its way through Bass, Shirley, and Jacob School roads. And the challenge is, is that on days like today, the pipe was no problem. And these are some pictures that Patricia Huggins talked about in the Taylor Neighborhood. The challenge with the, and you can see the standing water on just the other side of the Sutherland fence there. The challenge is, when we have really, really heavy rains, there's no place for this water to go. So when you drive by, it normally is a four-foot creek, it can be out of its banks about thirty feet on each side. Well, it's got nowhere to go because it's already flooding into Durock and the surrounding streets. The concern that we really have is this, is that it just seems like, as experts have spoken, I'm not an engineer, but as experts have spoken, there's just a lot of facts and additional information that's needed, we think, before we can really determine, is Sutherland and is the Taylor Neighborhood really not going to be affected? In a Courier-Journal article on Saturday, the Gulliver's attorney was quoted, "Most drainage from Breakers will not go through Sutherland. We need more engineering specifics than most drainage. We can't put our arms around that." This is the creek that goes out the side of Sutherland into Durock. This is some backyard flooding in Sutherland, heavy rains, obviously. That was earlier in the spring. That's not, that doesn't appear to be an appropriately designed drainage system. And again, I'm not an engineer. This is part of the creek going into Durock last April. That's what is the four-foot creek I described to you just a minute ago in April as well. Probably twenty feet from that house there, right? Another angle. This is looking from the back, Sutherland backs up to part of the farm. You can see obviously a lot of standing water there that's been problems for a long time for anybody that lives on that side adjacent to the farm. But moving along, these are some, just some additional pictures here, standing water in various people's backyards, you know, coming from the farm. Here's backyards on the inner part of Sutherland. You know, ultimately, the concern, I think this is the most informative of all. This is Wyndham Parkway, which is the main circle through the neighborhood, in two thousand fifteen. And somebody that's driving through here was pretty brave in a four-wheel-drive vehicle. You can see the cars and the level of the standing water here, there's nowhere to go. The storm sewers are actually pushing water back out of the storm sewers. Just a real concern that we have, and we just, as our engineers said, we just don't feel we've got enough information. Another concern, we would like for MSD and/or the engineers that designed Sutherland to share with us the size and the recommended capacity of both the storm sewers in Sutherland as well as the sanitary sewer pipes that are in our neighborhood now. What's my concern is, and our concern is, is the neighborhood as well as the Taylor Neighborhood as well, we want to see some proof that the Sutherland's storm sewer pipes as well as sanitary sewers can accept seventy-one new homes, large homes, a lot of concrete and asphalt, as well as avoiding raw sewage backing up in our basements because these pipes aren't big enough. And once again, we don't have enough information. We're also told that the HOA of the new development will be responsible to maintain this really, really large three-and-a-half acre detention lane. The question there would be, what if the HOA for this neighborhood doesn't have the funding? What if they don't get that done? We're back to the downstream issues with Sutherland and the Taylor Neighborhood. There are just a lot of questions. I think that ultimately, we have two hundred signatures on petitions asking the Commission to please consider either denying this plan or delaying until we can gather a lot of more information that's shared with all of us in order to really make, you know, a good decision. One last thing, and I appreciate your time. We also do have concerns, and a gentleman mentioned it earlier, connecting Eads Place is gonna add a whole bunch of traffic like we talked about. The other concern that we have in doing that, though, with that additional traffic, what impact's that gonna have on emergency responders, fire trucks, you know, ambulances, et cetera, et cetera? Pushing some of this water out the back of Sutherland. There's also a nursing home there on Bass Road, I think has about forty-five or fifty rooms there, with semi-private rooms, could be up to a hundred senior folks there. You know, with flooding issues there, with flooding issues there, we have some concerns about, you know, emergency responders, ambulances, et cetera, getting into there when we get into nineteen ninety-seven or two thousand and fifteen type flooding. Last but not least, I wanna present to you all this petition letter as well as the signatures and names and make this part of the record. I thank you so much for your time and your service.
Thank you. Kurt Reiling and Wyndham Morgan's on that.
Good evening, I'm Kurt Reiling. Address seven two one six Edmondson Place, Prospect, Kentucky, four zero zero five nine. I wanna talk about the responsibilities of engineers in society. And the reason is because the Planning Commission, you depend on approvals and recommendations from engineers to make your decisions. And in order to qualify myself on this subject, I felt, I feel it's necessary to review my credentials first. By education, I've got my bachelor's in science, mechanical engineering from Rochester Institute of Technology. Received my masters at Xavier University, and I taught at Sullivan University. My engineering work experience, IBM in Lexington. For several years, I've worked as a senior engineer in facility design and construction engineering. I'll come back to this later. I was also the manager of maintenance engineering at IBM. My department was responsible for over eighty-five pieces of equipment under maintenance on site with three hundred maintenance technicians. It is a research on the responsibilities of engineers in society. These are not my words, these are words of experts. Engineers have been around for a long, long time, but the number-one social responsibility of engineering profession is commitment to place public safety and interest ahead of all considerations. It means that engineer takes into account and shows due regard for the consequences of their conduct for well-being of others as well as the impact of their work on society. This requires the engineer to make determined efforts to discover all relevant facts concerning the design, development, deployment, and possible outcomes that may affect society positively or negatively. That is number-one job and responsibility of engineer, regardless of the discipline. There are dozens of disciplines of engineer, it doesn't matter. Civil, armed, mechanical, electric, industrial. Engineers have the same responsibilities. The second responsibility is what
The second responsibility is what most people think of, is what engineers exist for, they play a vital role in developing society. Designing of the majority of advancements in various fields, helping society become more efficient, economic, meaning increasing profits, providing more comfort, providing more safety and security, quite simply improving the way we live and work. At my time at RIT as Rochester Institute of Technology, the biggest thing I learned is being well-defined in what we design. Well-defined, complete and heavy verbal written communication and design to reproduce. And I was told by one professor over and over again, "Design is so a second-gripped commercial standard." And it has to be 100% complete. You can't have any gray areas, any holes, loopholes in there. People are wondering, "What do you mean with this design?" We were taught professional code of conduct, best practices, practices and ethics. I remembered that through, all the way through college until I graduated. And when I was looking for a place to work interviewing, it was a good year for us to graduate. There was a shortage of engineers, and I received several offers. And what I was looking for is a company that had the highest engineering standards, quality and professional code of conduct, best practices and ethics. So I chose IBM Lexington, they had everything I was looking for. So back to IBM, the facilities engineering. IBM Fortune 500 company, they do things right, they're built on quality. You look at their computers, they last forever, that's why people bought IBM computers back in the previous century. IBM Lexington was like a cell state city, 6,500 employees, about 20 acres of manufacturing office space under roof. And facilities engineering were responsible for the design, construction, and maintenance of office buildings, manufacturing facilities, robotics, conveyor systems, automated warehouses, HVAC, electrical plumbing, chemical treatment plants, sewage treatment plants, just to name a few. Our design and approval protocol, here's how we did it. Here's how IBM does things. By the way, we had 100 facilities engineers on that site alone, that's just one plant. We interview all of our customers and neighboring customers, not just the end user, but anybody that it would affect around that customer. These are internal customers, but their customers, find out what their needs were. And then we go back and research, design, collaborate with our team members and other experts. And we felt our design was 100% complete, not half-complete, 100% complete and ready to build. Then we go through our approval process. We have a fellow engineer in our department approve it, check it out, approve it, and then we go to our customers and make sure it was okay with that, the design meeting their specifications and their needs. And then we go to the neighboring customers, people that it would directly or indirectly affect by the project. Then we go to maintenance engineering. Those are the ones that have to take care of the machines or these projects when we get finished. And finally, we had this department called Safety Engineering, OSHA-certified engineers, they're the guys we had to get past. And they made us nervous, for a good reason. If we didn't get it right, they sent us back to the drawing board. They weren't given anything to pass to us that might cause a safety hazard. If there's any chance it could cause a safety hazard, they were not approved. We go back to the drawing board. Once we got past safety, we were finally approved, and then we could put it out in the bid to construction contractors and get pricing. So I went to MSD's website to find out what they're all about. MSD's overview on their website says, "They're a non-product regional utility service. Its revenue comes from wastewater and stormwater service fees plus charges for extending wastewater lines connecting to new customers," is their overview. Their vision is clean, safe waterways for a healthy and vibrant community. Their mission, provide exceptional wastewater drainage and flood protection services for our community. Customer service, achieve a premium level of customer satisfaction by serving our customer promptly in a responsive and respectful manner. Accountability, maintain the highest levels of integrity to assure the public trust in transparency by individual responsibility and stewardship. Environment, continually improve the environmental quality of our waterways through collaboration with the community and maintaining our infrastructure. Community, advocate on behalf of our community for public health, safety, and protection in accordance with our mission. Fantastic statements. Now, I've only lived in Sutherland for two and a half years, so all this is relatively new to me. I've never dealt with MSD like this before. I've never dealt with this process. I've never dealt with development engineers before. But what I've seen here, and I've learned from the original design of Sutherland from 20-plus, 25-plus years ago, that that was a design flaw by Seaback Wilson and Lingo. That was approved by MSD. Now, if MSD truly was qualified to study and review designs, how did that get passed on? If that was a flawed design? But it did. Now, fast forward 25, 27 years later, here we are again. They, Seaback's the same engineering firm, they passed, what, three, four, five plans past MSD. MSD has rubber stamped and approved every one of them. And I think two or three of them were flawed designs. They just wouldn't have worked, and they admitted it. The developer admitted that injection well would not work, so they had to go on to the one that they're showing you now. On August 6th, the developers showed their most recent plan, which is not the one we're looking at today, but their next plan they showed, it was stamped as approved the same day. Now, how in the world could an MSD engineer inspect and check a design to make sure it was safe and is going to work in a few hours? Impossible. So what they're doing is they're trusting the developer's engineers to be correct, oh, that's been approved, you have a balancing, you know, look at history, they have trusted them in the past if they're wrong. They've been approving incomplete designs on the same day, they're not consulting with their customers, there's no check and balance system, they're not following the responsibilities of engineers in society, there was no technical review on the latest plan that we're looking at that we see tonight. Safety does not seem to be a concern. They're not following their own protocols at MSD. This current development plan we're looking at is a pipe dream. Conclusions that I've made here is MSD does not follow any of their own guidance statements that I read to you earlier, except one, their revenue. The only thing they seem to be following is their revenue. Trying to sign up more customers to get service fees, that's all I can deduce from this whole thing. My recommendation to the planning commission is that you've been trusting MSD a long time. And just this isolated instance that I've seen with Sutherland and the Breakers and historic James Taylor neighborhood, if that's the way to cross out Louisville, I would suggest that Louisville Metro set up a third-party engineering firm to do the inspection, approval, and final approval of all sewer development. MSD simply can't be trusted. You need a third-party unbiased company that follows engineering professional codes of conduct, best practices and ethics. It must be society that's safety cautious. And then also, consult with customer leaders that are directly and indirectly affected by these sewer projects, and get them involved in a collaborative discussion with MSD. I request that, on the planning commission, respectfully, that at least give us 30 days to review their completed design, the developer's completed design. This design that we see here, in my estimation, only 50% completed, nowhere close to 100% completed. We can't review a design unless it's complete. So once it's completed, then give it to us, give us 20 days to review it, and then we'd like to come back to the table. Thank you very much.
I'd like to remind you, we still have 13 people who wish to speak in nine minutes, so please be brief in your comments. Your daughter-in-law, Ted, just tells you to bring the board to the conference room.
Wendell Morgan, 6510 Shirley Avenue, Prospect, 40059. And I would like to state that complied does not mean approved, far from it, that's just the minimum. The initial injection plan by MSD that was approved had a bond attached to it, which means that if anything went south, they had reserves or monies to fix it. In this plan, it doesn't have anything like it, but they still preliminary have approved it. And there is a conflict of interest with Seaback Wilson and Lingo, meaning that they can't answer your questions, the planning commission, about what you asked or what you stated earlier, because they know the drainage systems in Sutherland and in James Taylor. I'm done.
Thank you. And that's the last name, it's 760 Endicott Drive, 7609 Endicott.
And John Clark will be there.
I'll share the picture, I don't know if they're going to be able to get it up or not, but I'll be quick. My name's Mike Lindsey, 6928 Wyndham Parkway. One of my concerns is certain damage traffic. Twice last week, I was coming back on River Road towards Sutherland, and I'm in bumper-to-bumper to Kroger, I don't know if you know how long that is, but there's one way each way, there are electricity poles on both sides, there's just no way for the facility to kind of expand or lean itself to fixing that kind of issue. So when we talk about the emergency responders, I mean, this is some of those downstream effects. We've talked about some of the issues as far as through the neighborhood, I mean, I think that should be considered because there are kids on those streets riding bikes, and now it's going to be kind of a byway for a lot of folks driving through. And I know that's not among the major issues here we talked about tonight. And lastly, and maybe we'll get the picture up, but just hearing this tonight, I feel like we're kind of approving a promise, not exactly approving a plan, making a decision on that, so I don't want to get into it because I know other people have and say it more eloquent than I can. But we get one time to build it. I'm a project manager by trade, I build software, we can, if there's a problem, we can fix it relatively quickly. You can't unbuilt a neighborhood, you can't redo all the sewers, we've proven that, there's an 800,000 project they're not getting to to help distort James Taylor neighborhoods. So I don't understand that we have to move fast, I don't think the plan should be secret. I just feel like we're a community all living together, and I think the plans to be reviewed, to be completed, to be collaborated on, is in the best interest of all neighborhoods, including potentially the Breakers. That's the picture right there, it's kind of hard to do unless you start doing the zooms, but that is about 300 feet from the Kroger exit, which is, I don't know, I'm guessing a mile to the red light that I'm waiting for, so just wanted to say that, that's all. Thank you for your time, I'd buy you a coffee, but then you might go to bed, so I'm sorry.
John Clark. Sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Yeah, I gave my time to visit a play ball.
We'll continue on with the others. Does he have a speaker for me?
Yes, he does.
Okay, we'll get to him.
Good evening, commissioners of the planning board. My name is Clay Long, I'm president of Fort Avenue Corporation, my mailing address is 7420 White Cliff Drive, Prospect, 274059, and my home is at that address in Sutherland. If no one's done it yet, I'd like to thank the commissioners for their service, civil service to the planning commission. My corporation, Fort Avenue, has developed a significant number of challenging properties in the metro area, including Cardinal Harbor, the Harbor-Hare Street, Capesport Marina, River Creek subdivision, Bashford Manor Mall, the Shadowwood Treatment Plant, 1616 Burner Lane, Brownsville Terrace, Swiss Cleaners and others. My personal experience working with the engineers, the firm of Gene Lance, engineers Darrell and Hotline, and I'm a bloodhouseer, has developed one with no formal engineering degree. I was personally involved in obtaining a 404 permit, four of an engineer's permit for Marina, Capesport Marina, maintaining waterfalling compliance for Shadowwood Treatment Plant, construction of the large MSD detention basins at Bashford Manor Mall as well as working with Divisional Waters since 1989, 200 environmental cleanup of one of the properties. Tonight I'm requesting that the planning commission reject the developer's application in its entirety as it is patently unsafe and from an engineering and environmental standpoint, and incomplete in its scope of track. The applicant has been less important, forthcoming on previous occasions, for example, by stating that the labeling of the proposed Class V injection well was pejorative, which I worry is an attempt to classify this reckless engineering as something that should be approved. The proposed design at the time fits squarely into the description of Class V injection well, and if the applicant planned to use it for anything else outside that description, it's certainly no purpose. Initially, we were supplied with a document that intends to imply that all the discharge from the development go into a culvert near 7412 White Cliff Drive, when it appears that a large amount will also discharge into the drainage ditch in Sutherland and ultimately contribute to the flooding in the Jacob School, Taylor Pass, and Shirley Lane communities that you hear is trust. The latest document entitled Plan Review Map dated 1/25/19, timestamp 1/52/44, was presented to us exclusively the drainage plan and Breakers plans to use, referred to now as the August 6th plan or whatever. The plan is wholly inadequate and illustrating the hydrological effects the project will have on the neighborhoods of Sutherland, Ennis Brook, and the Jacob School-Taylor neighborhood. Number one, the grade of the development is not depicted, making hydrologic modeling impossible. Number two, the proportional amounts of water going into the various drainage paths are not depicted. Number three, the plan shows drainage structures that do not exist and others that are requested with no intention that they will ever be approved or built. Some of these structures, such as the Catch Basin at 7420 White Cliff Drive, are dormant, being never built, and the property owners will engage in more actions to prevent their construction if entitled. It is not indicated that those structures fall within MSD's 20-year plans or any of MSD's plans. Number four, the plan indicates that if a storm event would cause capacity to be reached, the entire Breakers watershed will effectively be converted to impervious surface as a result of saturation, making the drainage flow backwards through the conveyances, serving the detention basins, causing catastrophic flooding of surrounding and downstream communities. On space, the plan appears prone to changing the flood classification or at least flood behavior of some homes such as 7412 White Cliff Drive, and it are prepared to dispose in or on the 500-year flood plain in a near an area of high discharge, which may cause a local backwater effect. Stated simply, the ejection of high-velocity water from the culvert could cause premature flooding of residences. If Sutherland was established in 1992, it implies that the age of the sanitary stormwater systems have been in service over 20 years. The effective failure of parts or all this aging system from debris, clogging, or damage such as the kind that is well documented in the record from the responses to service calls to the residents of Patricia Huggins by MSD in the Bass and Shirley Lane areas not stated, and no backup drainage plan for that contingency is listed. Despite assurances from the developer, water flow appears to be poised to discharge not only the Ace Kennedy Park from the culvert at 7412 White Cliff Drive, but also into the drainage swell from a different culvert further south, the swell that is flooding the Jacob-Saylor community. Number eight, the static level of the retention basin is not stated. Obviously, its effective capacity will be reduced by the water that remains in the basin on a long-term basis. Information has surfaced from a surveyor that indicates a possible shallow water table near the site. There could be many causes for this, including a spring, unknown underground river, or a freshwater land similar to a Guyven Heitberg land. Geological survey must be performed to determine if the detention basin is even feasible. It will be useless if there is a water table problem. It seems obvious that the current plan is abandoned early on is unworkable, and then the applicants grasp at the patent adversary's idea of forcing the stormwater into a protected well-protected area. There's good reason to abandon the current plan, but MSD apparently has no intention of protecting the public as they approved the injection plan, and now are saying that the previously abandoned, the current plan has somehow gained merit. MSD has proven that their approved plans need to be independently reviewed in the interest of protecting the public's property and safety. It is unclear if quality of water that is currently entering the remaining wetlands on the property, including the one on River Fields and the one on their property, will be the same during and after development as would be required by a 404 water quality permit. It is also unknown if a 404 quality permit will be required, but good practice mandates that those requirements should be observed. MSD's admission, the best place for this stormwater to end up is in the Ohio River. The applicants have a practicable alternative, they have a 12-inch pipe that runs directly to the river through River Fields property, and they should use that. They should have to reduce the number of the homes to the amount that that pipe can handle, but given the impressive aesthetics of what they are planning, that should work out nicely. After all, when they purchased the property, they knew the limitations they were facing. For all of us to labor through the misconception that more homes can safely be built there is a waste of time. For this and many other reasons, the LDT commissioners, excuse me, the planning commissioners will be remiss in granting approval of this project. will need to be revised so drastically that the process will have to start over, save the resources and deny this application. Thank you, Commissioners.
Good evening. Matthew dated 6925 Wyndham Parkway, Prospect Kentucky 40059. I'd like to talk about the water filtration system, the economic importance of Wellhead. Louisville's rate is having the top three best water in the United States consistently. This resource is what makes our city great. Any business investing in Kentucky could show that we have the work rate of clean drinking water for our employees. This is something that other states simply do not have. This is something that foreign governments and other countries do not have, therefore making this resource of international and national resource economic importance. All 46 acres of McCall Farm are located in the Wellhead Protection Area. Nearly all of the site is currently pervious and can accept rainfall directly into the ground, which is the most worst weather affecting drinking water in the world. Any impervious improvements made to this parcel would result in a negative impact to the riverbank filtration system. So can you throw up that map, please? The waters from this farm are a direct source of water to the riverbank filtration system. Any impervious improvements to the site would result in the award-winning clean drinking water for Louisville being converted to floodwaters of the Ohio River. To clarify, the water currently falls from the sky onto McCall Farm, is filtered by the ground, and ends up in the tunnel 150 feet below ground as clean drinking water, which then gets pumped to our taps and we drink it. This project would take the same waters that's falling from the sky and direct it straight to the Ohio River, which will act as floodwaters of the Ohio River, or to a detention pond where it would evaporate and go back into the atmosphere and not end up as our clean drinking water. This is a detention pond. This is not a wetland. McCall Farm currently accepts 60 million gallons of, on average, water per year that can be converted directly into clean state to clean drinking water. Last year, that number was 90 million gallons. Based on this, I believe the property should have been redesigned back in 2010 when they built the water infiltration system, the riverbank infiltration tunnel was built. And just quickly, I want to reference Public Law 107-56, or more commonly known as the Patriot Act. This talks about critical infrastructure protection, paragraph 2, private business government, the national security apparatus increasingly depend on the interdependent network of critical physical informational infrastructures, including telecommunications energy, financial services, water, and transportation services. They did a lot of, they asked for a lot of agency approval. They have to get an approval because of this dynamic where they're affecting the clean drinking water and this critical infrastructure. They have to get a permit from the Department of Homeland Security. Thank you.
Mark Jackson.
Do you have any questions?
We'll hold questions until the Lisa Hunter? This may be. Okay. And Mark Jackson, follow the group.
Good evening. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Lisa Hunter. I live at 76 Endicott Place, Prospect Kentucky 40059. And I just want to talk a little bit more and give some context of historical claims of Riverfield that the, excuse me, that the executive director of Riverfield spoke about earlier, which is an incredible natural and historical resource for the region. And here it is. So these are some studies done, as Meany talked about earlier, and many people know, Frederick Walmsley was commissioned to design a park system for Louisville in 1891. He is a landscape architect, the premier landscape architect, the father of landscape architecture, and famous for designing many well-known urban parks, including Central Park over on the left, and then our very own, a study of our very own Shelby Park on the right. The Louisville Park System is maybe the most important park system that Walmsley designed because it most fully realized his vision to have an interconnected system of parks, connected by tree-lined parkways instead of freestanding parks, as was the common practice. So our 18 parks and six parkways were conceived under Walmsley's in the south direction, an incredible piece of our history and one that we continue to guard and to enjoy today. So as you see here, this is from the office of Walmsley Brothers Landscape Architect for project number 9725 Sutherland Farm. It details 131 drawings in total, which were completed between 1945 and 1963. There are also over 50 historical photos of the project in a cursory investigation. A review of the site confirms that the walled garden, swimming pool, and poolhouse structure, the entrance gates, greenhouse, fences, locks, and all of the grounds were designed for George Wagner Brown by Walmsley Brothers. So I'm just going to share with you some images to contextualize this. This is a preliminary study for the west entrance gates. So obviously, a property of huge historical significance, because there's some more detailed drawings, they're hard to see. The left is the grounds around the main house, and a more detailed one on the right is the formal gardens and the pool that exist and are in the current plans to be destroyed by the developer. And there's actually plans for what is to become Louisville's first in-ground pool that's adjacent to that, the formal gardens there. This is one of dozens of topographical studies that were designed. This one is in the Walmsley Archives. This one is for the main Sutherland Farm Road Drive. And then you can see here, fence and wall studies, just more details of these studies of the iron fences and gates of the property, as well as blueprints for the poolhouse, all of which exist today and all of which bear Walmsley's fingerprints. Just to contextualize it a bit more, some of the historical photos of the construction are here. You see the pool and the poolhouse structure to the top left, an eastern wall behind the main house on the top right, the site for the walled gardens there on the bottom left, and then a soon-to-be constructed rock wall that runs behind the pool, the length of the property behind the house. And then here today, these are how these formal gardens, these are the formal gardens at different range points as they exist on the farm today, and again, all are in the current plan, going to be raised. This is one very important aspect of the historical gem that Sutherland is. There's also a lot more. There's a Prospect Railroad remnants on the farm, so the railroad was responsible for the settlement of Prospect in Fort Wayne. Construction began in 1870, and it connected the area of Prospect to the bustling city of Louisville. It was the main road for every new people, supplies, and connecting industry until 1935, when Rachel Christian closed it. Historical remains of the railroad can be found on the eastern side of the farm, near the farm gate. Also here is a Native American burial mound that's protected under state law. It's in the Sutherland neighborhood, a few hundred feet from one of the border of the Sutherland farm. It begs the question as to what other historic and prehistoric remains are on the farm. We should take care in finding out. So I'll leave you tonight. Again, I thank you for your time and your service as we think through and we reflect on the incredible historical, cultural, and ecological resource that this property represents. We realize that not all our four zoning opportunities are created equally, and not all of them are ready for immediate development. Not all of them should be given a rubber stamp. Some, like this Sutherland farm, are tricky here because the stakes are higher. Let's be clear, we're not against development, but we are against the development that unfairly places profit ahead of the well-being of citizens that are directly impacted by it, especially in communities that are already suffering the ill effects of prior poorly claimed developments as we see here today. We should honor the legacy of this incredible property and make sure that there is due diligence in all aspects of its development. We should take the appropriate time and the steps required to ensure that there is a proper drainage plan in an area that already has major flooding problems, as we've witnessed here tonight, problems that have only been exasperated by heavier rains. We should give third-party engineers the appropriate time that is needed to research and validate the plan put forth by the Breakers. We should ensure that there are plans in place to mitigate the loss that was essentially a wildlife preserve in the heart of the suburban community, and we should take care that we fully understand its rich history for both the city of Louisville, the state of Kentucky, and the nation before we raise historical artifacts and make them a part of the history that we can ever get back. So again, thank you. And our ask today is simple. We're asking just a little bit more time to make sure that we get it right. Thank you.
Andrew Jackson will follow you.
Mark Jackson, 7700 River Road, Prospect Kentucky 40059. I am the president of the James Taylor Jacobs School Neighborhood. We are the least and most at the last. MSD has promised us different things to get our area fixed, and we don't really want to keep beating up on MSD, but when the 92 came, when the Sullens were built, the plan wasn't efficient enough to handle the groundwater. We started getting flooded even more than what we had already been flooded. When Sutherland's Neighborhood Association reached out to us with this new Breakers and decided to help us out along with us helping them out, maybe we could get some things accomplished in our neighborhood. Historical neighborhoods, Rosenwald School, Jacobs School, in the neighborhood, Morris, Washington, Tuskegee Airmen, in the neighborhood, Ace Kennedy Park, named after African-American woman, in the neighborhood. We get the grunt of everything because we down here. Nobody seems to think about it till it's too late and we have to go to the media and start talking about our issues. That's not moral at all. We don't want the developer to think that we are against what she's doing. Slow down, let the proper people do the proper things and engineering so that we won't get the grunt because once the houses are built and the rain comes and the thing don't work, you can't tear the homes down and say, "We made them sleep." That's all we asking as far as that's concerned. James Taylor Neighborhood, Minister Mark Jackson. Thank you very much.
And Steve Hayden will follow her.
Mr. Secretary, where are we?
We are already 16 minutes over, and that would be many. And we have five.
Hi, Heather Watson, 6309 Walnut Beach Trail, Prospect Kentucky 40059. Thank you. I live in Sutherland, and I've been here for 19 years, and I want to briefly touch on the wetlands and wildlife that we're really concerned about. Meany Runyon spoke on them briefly, but this is a different wetland that's going to be destroyed as to what we had discussed. The following pictures are taken by Sutherland evidence. This is the wetland that's going to be destroyed by the developer. She's going to put homes right on top of this wetland, and we believe she is disregarding the habitat for all the creatures that live here. This is the wetlands in April, a very large area. I think Mr. Ashburn said it was maybe two tenths of an acre. Our engineers have come up with different, a different number, more like 1.8 acres, but that's, again, so many questions left unanswered. More wetlands, wood ducks that come every spring, and they nest in the exact wetland that's going to be destroyed. We have eaglets in that wetland, blue heron, bluebirds, which are 9% decreasing in, sorry, they're decreasing 9% in their ecosystem. Great horned owls, right on the area that's going to be destroyed, parroted shoppings, gray tree frog snails, mini mini deer on the farm, opossum stumps, eastern cotton-tailed you can just see by all these pictures. These are all pictures that were taken from people that backed up to the farm. This is a stock photo, but many neighbors have seen alligator snapping turtles, which we believe are protected and would like for fish and wildlife to come and evaluate what is protected, threatened, and endangered. This is the comet, I'm sorry, comet snapper swimming in the wetlands. They have lots of these. Again, the bluebirds that are declining. Let's see if I can play this. Sorry, there was video of the play of the turtles swimming in the wetlands that are going to be destroyed. But let me just reiterate what Meany Runyon said. This property should be listed on the National Register of Historic Properties. A. B, we're going to increase our traffic by 15,000 to 20,000 by this developer using Sutherland as a cutthroat. This is a huge traffic concern for us, and it's a huge public safety concern for us and our children. The flooding, we've discussed the flooding. This is the same MSD and the same engineers that did Sutherland that want to do the Breakers. So it's flawed. We ask for more time, and thank you for your time.
And who will be followed by Tim Long?
Steve Hayden, 7214 Edmondson Place, Prospect Kentucky 40059. I guess I have a, well, the first comment I would like to make is that it appears from everything I've heard this evening that MSD is very consistent at being negligent or grossly negligent in their responsibilities, because back 20, 25 years ago when it was developed, we're all aware that Sutherland was approved and shouldn't have been under the current plan because it has flooded the neighborhood. And I called Joel Doc, and I called Joel, and I said, "Joel, I'm a little bit concerned as a resident, because what has been done to correct that problem?" And he indicated that MSD said, "Yeah, we were responsible." And I said, "What have they done to correct it?" Basically, nothing. So they, you know, it cost $800,000. So as a homeowner, it's my understanding that if someone develops property, they cannot interfere with the current flow of the water. So I asked him, I said, "Let's just hypothetically say that they approved Breakers, and they flooded my home and all the neighbors, and they damaged our property. Who is going to take the, who's going to be accountable and responsible for the running damages that we incur?" And that's, you know, my question is, they messed up before, chances are they're going to mess up again, and they have a track performance that's not good. And here we are in Louisville, where the Kentucky Derby is, and we look at past performances before we bet on a horse. Well, MSD has past performance, and it's not good. So my question, do they have sufficient reserves and insurance money to reimburse anybody that they damaged? Because obviously, they have not done that to the James Taylor Neighborhood. And last, I'll leave with a question. Was there a transportation impact study done on what this proposal would do to our neighborhood? And I don't know, I'm asking the board, was there a transportation study? Does anyone have that answer as to how this would impact our neighborhood, River Road 42, or is that necessary?
We'll address questions at the end.
I'm sorry?
We'll address questions at the end.
Okay. Okay, well, and I'd like to respectfully ask the members of the zoning board, it's pretty simple, just open hell to Breakers, it's that simple. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Long.
We'll address questions at the end.
I'm sorry?
We'll address questions at the end.
Okay. Okay, well, and I'd like to respectfully ask the members of the zoning board, it's pretty simple. Just vote no to breakers. It's that simple. Thank you.
Tim Hass, 712 Beechwood Beach Road, 40059. I'm the president of Beechwood Beach Homewar Association. One thing nobody's touched on, except our engineer in the very beginning, he mumbled very quickly again about this ditch of the hills. It's stopped up, has been stopped up for years. And there, you know, there's a 48-inch pipe at the top, comes down through this wooded, ruddy ravine into this ditch that's stopped up. Supposed to run over a pass lane and down to a creek on the water talking property, which it doesn't do because it's stopped up. It holds close to the road. The last three years of atmospheric rains, it stayed wet down there. The health department comes out and sprays from mosquitoes. They never had to do that before, three or four years ago. And nobody's fixed it and they want to pour more water in. Who's, I don't know if it's MSD ditch or parched water ditch, but nobody takes care of it and not having. Number one, they say it's stopped up and they say, "What stopped up? Nobody mentioned figuring it unstopped up. How's it going to work?" I mean, that's my question. The water can't go any, it's not going to work now, it's not going to put more and it's going to do worse. And so I've got to say something needs to be addressed about how you're going to get the water through the ditch if you're leaving acceptable water. I'd say you should hold up on the same thing and figure out more answers to it. Thank you.
Dan Troszkowski, calling about Gerald Powell. Powell? Hello, my name is Dan Troszkowski. I live in Sutherland Neighborhood, 6908 Wyndham Parkway, Prospect, Kentucky 40059. I've lived in Sutherland for 20 years and my yard does flood. Every time it rains, it's only 20 minutes. I back up to Turnbridge Road and the people covered the flooding and I don't want to beat a dead horse on that, but I agree with all the flooding issues. I want to add a couple of points to the traffic issues. I live on the corner of Wyndham and Turnbridge, as I said. Probably half of the neighborhood goes ass on house every day. If Sutherland, Wyndham Parkway's like a clock, I'm probably at 10 o'clock, 1 o'clock if you're visualizing that. I don't have a map to show you. But in the last 20 years, the traffic, as we all know, in Prospect has increased on River Road as well as on Highway 42. And in the morning as well as in the afternoon, probably for an hour, hour and a half, things get backed up both directions, which causes everyone, I feel, no one that I know regularly uses the front entrance to Sutherland, which is off of 42. There is no traffic light there. And the side entrance exit to Sutherland is Sedgwick and everyone uses that on a regular basis. And also the entrance to Innesbrook, which is off of 42. There is no traffic light there either. So if only common logic, if you are stuck in traffic and you need to get your home in breakers and you're stuck on River Road for 20 minutes, you're not going to go to the light of 42 and River Road and turn left on 42 and go down 42 and then sit there in more traffic to turn left on Sutherland Farm Road to go through Innesbrook through breakers. You are going to turn left as soon as you possibly can on Sedgwick and go through Sutherland and go through breakers and Innesbrook. So we're not only going to get the additional breakers traffic, which is going to times two, how many cars want to go on a daily basis coming and going, we are also going to get Innesbrook because it's just going to increase traffic in both directions. And there are no stop lights or traffic lights or left-hand arrows or a left-hand turning light on Highway 42. So I just wanted to address the additional traffic issues. Thank you for your time and staying late this evening.
Is he here?
My name is Kelly Welch. I live at 6409 Walnut Bridge Trail in Sutherland, the Ziffus 40059. I live on the corner of Walnut Bridge and Wyndham. My property backs up to the McCall Farm currently. Immediately in behind me and to the right is the wetland that is going to be destroyed. I have lived in Sutherland for 21 years and since that time, since that time, the wetland that is going to be destroyed has done nothing but get larger and larger. I don't know exactly why that is, but my, and they mentioned, of course, all the wildlife that's in there, which I love. I sit out and watch the deer and all the animals. But my concern is, when you pave over a wetland, where does that water go? I have a drain basin between my home and our next-door neighborhood. And the last time we had a really significant rain, not only were our yards unable to drain into that basin, but water flowed backward through that basin up into our yards. This problem has existed for a while. It was worse after the development of Innesbrook. I don't know why that is. I'm just telling you, I'm not an engineer. But all I know is it concerns me that this particular wetland is going to be just totally paved over. And there's been very little conversation about that with the exception of Heather Watson. And I don't, I haven't heard any comments from the developer as to how, where that water's going to be redirected. And will it be coming in my direction? Because right now, it's within feet of my property line. So will it be coming to me or will it be going to them? The other thing someone asked me to mention is not only will we get increased traffic from Innesbrook and the breakers, which my house, we'll all be going right by my house, but additional traffic such as school buses, trash collection, construction vehicles, all of that will also be going past our homes. Anybody going into that development to, you know, plumbers or anybody who does work under home, it will be easier for them to cut through Sutherland than to go on and exit off of 42. I hope you'll let know, or at least give us an opportunity to maybe reduce the scope of the neighborhood or get a better idea of exactly what this wastewater removal plan is all about. Thank you.
Anyone else here that wishes to speak on this?
I'd like to speak, Madam Chair, John Clark. John Clark, 6823 Wyndham Parkway, Prospect, Kentucky 40059. I was president of the Sutherland HOA for the eight years prior to Steve Dowars taking over. I've had many conversations with MSD regarding the drainage in Sutherland or the lack of drainage in Sutherland. I walked the drainage system with Robyn Barrow, who was a former employee of MSD multiple times, trying to find a solution for the water that flows to Dorock into a very small pipe and it just backs up into Sutherland and eventually during the extreme rains does overtake the road. As Steve mentioned, much of the drainage system in Sutherland is above ground ditches. And this was a plan that was put forward and implemented by Sebag Wilson in 1992, as people have mentioned before. So ended up being a flawed plan. Doesn't work real well. Pushes water to the Taylor Neighborhood, which is unacceptable. They have flooding frequently and MSD's aware of that. They've been aware of it for years. They developed a plan and they said they don't have the money to fix anything, yet they keep approving these projects. And as it relates to the, to the wetlands, Mr. Ashburn said they'll be impacted, they'll be destroyed. So that's all I'll say. Thank you.
Commissioners, questions? The opposition? Yes, please.
A question from Mr. Runyon, if you could come to the microphone. You know one bad guy that I don't need to refer to his slides. I believe the applicant mentioned that there is an easement block in Riverfield's property to drain that, but you guys will not allow them to get on the property and enlarge if they deem it appropriate, a good thing to do that. It seems like that would be a solution just to the existing problem, to go in and enlarge that pipe, if somebody's willing to go ahead and pay for doing that.
Actually, I did not hear the applicant's attorney say that we would not allow the enlargement of it. Well, maybe I'm incorrect, I didn't hear. The truth is, Riverfield has a mission under the law that we are supposed, we are required to meet. We can lose our IRS status as a nonprofit if we do anything other than meet our mission. That mission is to protect, preserve, and enhance cultural and natural resources of the Ohio River, including the scenic and agricultural resources.
So you're saying, yes, you're willing to allow them to come in?
No, I did not say that. What I'm saying is, and I'm sorry, our attorneys have left because this really is a legal question. But the issue is, is that in order to meet our mission, we cannot allow the profit of an individual such as any developer to be facilitated by something that we do. So in other words, it is not your job and it's not our job to allow this developer to develop on property that has drainage problems. We absolutely, absolutely will let the developer come and use the pipe as it is. It's a 12-inch pipe. If the developer wants to take some of its drainage from the development and send it to the river, they can do that. They can have access to the, to our pipe. They can rebuild the pipe and they can use the pipe. We have no problem with that. What we can't do is expand the pipe for the profit of an individual because that is contrary to the laws that govern, govern a nonprofit organization.
But if there was determined that a margin in the pipe would also help the adjacent subdivision residences, that's really not just one person.
That has never been deemed corrupt by MSD. They've never said that. I've met with Dave Johnson at MSD. He knows where our position is. In fact, he told me that the developers' representatives went to them and asked them, "What could he do to talk us into widening the pipe?" And Dave Johnson said, "That is not their mission." We, Dave Johnson and MSD have never said that using the Riverfield's pipe is going to solve the current problems. No, there is no statement in any public record, any handwriting, and it has never been said by MSD that whatever somebody has told you, that widening the pipe will resolve, will solve the current problems. The current problems relate to the way that Sutherland was development, developed, the way that was insufficient, related to the clay five feet that the developers' representatives described. It is also related to the fact that they moved all of that water through a drainage ditch that is insufficient and then dumps it on an African-American neighborhood. No professional has ever said that using Riverfield's pipe as it exists will do anything to improve the drainage in the pre-existing neighborhoods. If that is so, we would be happy to entertain that. But having met with MSD, they have never stated that.
Mr. Runyon, I'm not trying to stand you that you're, the pipe that Riverfield's owns does.
I'm sorry, somebody called and I couldn't understand what you said.
The pipe that Riverfield's owns, everything flows into the Ohio River, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so you, you don't think that the developer being able to, I guess, connect to that pipe would, you're thinking, I guess, that the developer connecting to the pipe that you are on would not be an asset for the citizens of the community?
No, I didn't say that.
No, you didn't say that, but you're saying not for profit. You could not do it for profit, but if it's helping all the citizens in the area, how can that be for profit?
Ms. Howard, if the developer wants to use our pipe, they are absolutely allowed to use it.
Okay, so, but I'm not talking about for profit. What happened, what did you say about for profit?
I'm sorry, our lawyer's not here.
Okay.
Maybe Mr. Strobo can help me in this because there are rules that govern the IRS, and I'm not an expert, but you just have to trust me. I've been doing this for a long time. I teach governments on nonprofits. But the Internal Revenue Service is the agency that deems whether you are a nonprofit or not. And recently, there have been a number of nonprofits which have behaved in ways that have been demonstrated to not to actually function to help the economic benefit of individuals, okay? Those nonprofits lose their certification as a nonprofit. I can't, I'm not an expert, but I can tell you that I've been trained in, from all over the country, and our lawyers have stated without any question in their mind that we cannot benefit a private developer and be able to defend our nonprofit status. If the developer wants to use our 12-inch pipe, they absolutely can do it. They can get onto the property and they can use it.
Thank you.
We have no problem with that.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
It's helping. Thank you.
I'm happy to answer more questions.
Other questions? Okay, we'll hear from the applicant group. According to my clock, you have an hour and 11 minutes before you're done.
Madam Chair, there's been a lot of discussion about, a lot of discussion about MSD's role in the view of drainage plans. Been a lot of discussion about how this particular drainage plan works. With your permission, I'd like to have Joey Ashby from MSD come up and answer a couple of quick questions for me. And then particularly in rebuttal, we are limited to a single speaker because of the technical nature of some of the questions that were asked. I would ask that you allow me and Pat Domick the opportunity to speak in rebuttal. Is that okay?
That's okay. We allow the opposition.
You already introduced yourself before. I just want to ask you a couple of general questions. When MSD reviews either a subdivision or a new development...
Madam Chair, there's been a lot of discussion about, a lot of discussion about MSD's role in view of drainage plans. There's been a lot of discussion about how this particular drainage plan works. With your permission, I'd like to have Joey Ashby from MSD come up and answer a couple of quick questions for me. And then particularly in rebuttal, we are limited to a single speaker because of the technical nature of some of the questions that were asked. I would ask that you allow me and Pat Dominick the opportunity to speak in rebuttal. Is that okay?
That's okay. We allow the opposition to answer.
You already introduced yourself before. I just want to ask you a couple of general questions. When MSD reviews either a subdivision or a new development proposal, what kind of review are you undertaking at the preliminary plan stage or the development plan stage?
For both soil and water drainage, we make sure that the system that is, that will be drained to has capacity to serve that development. And we do that on the preliminary stage by looking at the amount of area and the amount of volume that's developed, the purpose to provide, that we then verify during the detailed construction, when we face.
And at the detailed construction planning phase, or I'm sorry, at the preliminary plan stage, you are given information concerning the amount of new and previous service, I would imagine that you all have in-house information about the site, the quality and the downstream system. Is that correct?
We look at the difference in the runoff coefficient for the developments. So a development without much pavement will have a very low runoff coefficient. We then compare that with the proposed pavement, and the engineer will sign a, assign a different runoff coefficient, which results in a higher volume, and those are used to calculate the volume that's necessary for detention.
And there was testimony earlier from us, and it was alluded to by lawyers, about the volume of detention that's shown on the proposed Breakers Plan. I want to get into that. This, this, here. Can you tell me what that means for folks downstream? If you oversize the detention basin, what does that do for somebody downstream?
Could I get the mic a little bit closer?
Sorry. The question was, if, when you have an detention basin that is designed to exceed the requirements, what does that mean for somebody downstream?
So the, the purpose of a detention basin is to shave the peaks off of typical storms so that you minimize the impact of, or the peak flow rates during, during those storms. So by oversizing the detention, you're, you're able to shave those peaks even more and, and thereby have less runoff, not, not volume runoff, but just a less peak flow.
I'm going to go ahead and go through a couple of things, and then I'm going to ask Pat to respond to some of the statements that were made specifically with regard to the drainage system. I just, there are, there are so many misconceptions about not only the process, but about the proposed plan. And I think the first thing, the first big misconception is that at the preliminary plan stage, that we are required to produce absolutely complete engineering studies. As I said at the very beginning of our conversation tonight, this is part of an approval process. The planning commission's part of the approval process is applying the subdivision regulations and applying the land development code to a given lot and street pattern to determine whether at this stage it meets those requirements. The staff has indicated that we meet those requirements, and the Breakers meet those requirements. We have provided evidence to you that we have half of the number of lots that would otherwise be allowed under the underlying zoning, and nearly three times the required detention in order to mitigate offsite impacts that aren't even covered necessarily at this stage by the land development code. You heard several people saying, we need more information, more information, more information. You just heard from MSD that we've provided the information that's required now, and that MSD has given this plan its preliminary standard of approval that was, that was previously shown to you. With regard to consideration for those folks downstream, you know, I've dealt with many, many different kinds of development, and many different development proposals, and I know that lots of people can get emotional about a given proposal, and they can ascribe motives to people on the other side that just aren't there. From the very beginning, as you heard, Mr. Dominick testified before, the drainage system in, that is part of the Breakers, has been designed to avoid causing any additional issues for anybody downstream. And that has required multiple iterations of that drainage plan. And I just, I categorically deny that anybody has been given consideration that is less than any other, any other group. And I don't, I don't care for that accusation against my client or anybody involved in the review of this development. With regard to specific things that were stated, you know, Mr. Strobo talked about people are fearful, and then he quoted some statements of intent from our subdivision regulations. Number one, statements of intent are not regulations themselves, they are statements of intent. And number two, fear is definitely not part of the land development code, nor is it part of the subdivision regulations. With regard to Mr. Simonton, I may be mispronouncing that, if I am, I apologize. MSD has provided a good review. You know, I don't know what to say about his inability to review the plan at this time, but MSD has provided the review, and will provide a second level of review. But this preliminary plan goes from being a, essentially a two-dimensional drawing to a three-dimensional drawing. And it will review that in order to make sure that downstream impacts are not, not felt by anybody downstream. With regard to Riverfields and the Garvin Brown Preserve, I think the water company would agree, obviously drainage option number two was groundwater infiltration. MSD has stated from the beginning that getting the water into the river as quickly as possible is, is what should happen here. That would take water out of the, out of the area that would present problems. You know, our client had made very, very generous six-figure cash offers to Riverfields for easement across the Garvin Brown Preserve, in addition to annual payments, and that offer was rejected. Now, Riverfields is its own organization, it can decide what its mission is. I don't believe that there is a tax law problem for them, I don't believe it's a nonprofit problem for them, I don't think they're going to lose their nonprofit status, but they can make their own decisions. With regard to the downstream impact on Hayes Kennedy Park, you heard a gentleman from Beach La Beach talk about the fact that the ditch does not function as it was designed. We are committed to making downstream improvements, we will be required to make downstream improvements, including cleaning out culverts, including potentially recreating ditches, things like that in the park, if that is what is required in order to make the system function at the time we get to construction approval. And that's a note on our plan that we'll certainly abide by. With regard to, let's see, the impact on first responders. Harret Street Fire Department who serves this property has indicated its approval, that's already in the record, so I don't think that they have a concern, and they are first responders. So I think we've got that covered. With regard to the number of plans, there have been three drainage proposals. One was a concept that ultimately we could not obtain the easement from Riverfield's war, and so that plan was never stamped. The second plan, which was the groundwater infiltration, was stamped, although, once we consulted with the water company, the water company indicated, and I think it was in a letter that was sent to LDNT, that it did not want any penetrations, any groundwater infiltration within the wellhead protection area. In a meeting with the water company, in order to kind of cut through a lot of it, they said, we have this riverbank infiltration, it's a technological marvel, we want to protect it. While it may be possible, it may be scientifically possible for a groundwater infiltration system to work, until you prove that again, we are not okay with it. And our mission as the local water company is to protect the drinking water that we all drink. That is a shared, a shared desire. I want the water company to keep providing really good water for all of us. And, and their statement was, get, get the drainage into the river. Don't put it in the groundwater, get it into the river. And that's the plan that we have for you tonight. With regard to the MSD approval, you heard Mr. Ashby just say they had information about their downstream systems. Obviously, our system, our, our plan review system on this particular proposal started in January this year, eight, eight months ago. MSD has been aware of this plan for eight months. It is known, and it's known about the existing drainage system out there for 25 years. So it's not crazy to think that if they get a plan that indicates water is going to go into an existing system, and they have lots of information now, that they can quickly evaluate that and say, yes, that seems like an idea that is acceptable at this stage in the process. With regard to endangered species and historic preservation of the home, the home is not listed as a local landmark, the home is not currently on the National Register of Historic Places, and several of the elements that were part of this Olmsted Plan either were never implemented or have been removed at this point. Those that remain, that are primarily directly around the house, will be retained, and the house will be retained and then ultimately, you know, sold to a new user, but that is not something that is reason to, to turn down the proposed subdivision. Also, when it comes to endangered species or species of any kind, when I talked about the impact of the wetlands, so the wetlands delineation, just to remind you, back into that, has both jurisdictional and non-jurisdictional weapons on it. Non-jurisdictional weapons just mean you can't impact them, they're on your property. This particular wetland area is an old farm pond, and that can be removed without any, any further approval from a federal or state agency. This wetland area is being preserved, this open water feature is being preserved, these narrow bands of weapons here are the ones that are being impacted, and where there's a road crossing here, that's where the less than two acres came from, because those are the jurisdictional weapons that are being impacted. Because we're at that small number, we anticipate that the Army Corps of Engineers will issue a nationwide permit to allow that impact. Part of their analysis will be talking to the State Historic Preservation Office and talking with Mission Wild Lake to determine, will the proposed impacts here have an impact on historic resources or endangered species? That is something that those agencies handle, it's not the subject of the development, or it's not the subject of the subdivision regulations, and will be handled outside of this process. With regard to the burial mounds, I find it rich that somebody is saying that the burial mounds are only 400 feet from the farm, when they're probably only, you know, 100 feet from a home within the Sutherland neighborhood. Obviously, archaeological studies will be part of, again, that Army Corps of Engineers' review, and if elements are found that need to be preserved, they will be preserved. As far as we know, there are no protected species on the property at this time. So those are the particular items that I noted in the opposition's testimony. As a broad sort of statement, we talked about a lot of things that aren't the subdivision regulations, we talked about a lot of things that aren't in the land development. And those things, while they are interesting, and while they will potentially impact other reviews by other agencies, are not the sorts of things that should impact the work here tonight. With that, I'm going to ask Pat to just talk a little bit about the drainage, actually how it's going to work, where the water's going to come from, how it's going to get into the lake and then out. And I'll come back up.
I did want to spend a little bit of time talking about the drainage improvements with, with all the comments that were made. I think it's important to note that this property was really part of an original 350-acre The development and the dedication of property to the Riverfields started with the development of Sutherland in the early 90s. And that particular property owner was a gentleman named Joe Cross, who owned all this property. And so, you know, Sutherland was approved and developed about 400 years. And the nature preserve was set aside, and in, in doing so, this private easement was set up between the residual property, which was this, and the Garvin Brown Preserve. It was a private easement, though, and one of the challenges is, and I think with respect to Mr. Runyon's comments, this particular option is not solely a responsibility of Riverfields, because there were certain conditions placed on that easement that even though we had the right under the terminology of easement to grant it to a public entity, MSD wouldn't take it either, because there were certain restrictions that would keep them from coming back in at some point in time and maybe remedying a situation that needed to be fixed. So with respect to the, the original easement that went through there, that's very true, you do have that, that right. But once we construct 72 lots, that also becomes public drainage now, not private drainage. And there is sort of, that's kind of where, where the rub was on that. The 12-inch pipe is still there, it's still going to function in some capacity, but, so that was one of the options that, that we did look at. Let me go back to that. No, we did have two other options that, sorry. Yeah, here we go. Yeah, the red one is, is where the existing private easement was. And really, the other option was this purple route, which was to say, look, we'll abandon that pipe, Riverfields, we'll go ahead and abandon that. We know that cuts right across your property, let's put it on that side. And of course, we had the adjoining option too. Those were the first options we pursued. This is the plan that was presented at the January 15th neighborhood meeting. It's quite true, we didn't have a backup plan. If we didn't have an option, this was not going to be the plan we were going to come forward with. So with the rejection of those easement offers, we had to, we had to regroup. And I just want to point out, when you go around this development, as I said, this was part of originally a 350-acre tract of land, Sutherland gets developed. While there are certain pipes that run into this property, as they get to join the property, Innisbrook gets developed, there are certain pipes that extend into the property. There were multiple outlet options. Virtually none of those had the capacity to handle a development of 72 lots. And the most significant option was this corridor right through here, which ties into the Sutherland plan, and I'm going to skip ahead to this exhibit, because when you look at this corner of the property, this is that wetland, and this is the drainage system that kind of winds through Sutherland, comes through this wetland, and ultimately discharges down and through here on down and through here on the Bass, Shirley, Durock Avenue area near the James Taylor Neighborhood. When you look at the contouring here, this is all low-lying area. Now, it's true, the flooding may not have had the same level of flooding that we had, you know, 50 years ago in this area, but clearly, the wetland system that came through here ultimately took drainage this direction. And, you know, that may be natural drainage, it could be outlet from wetlands, it could be all kinds of different smaller watersheds that drain into that, but this is the area of concern, and always was the area of concern for us. And when we go back and talk about the different alternatives, the infiltration plan was actually a pretty creative proposal. It wasn't until the water company, and we got that letter, we had been talking with the water company all through the month of later part of June, in July, regarding this option. And I think we received a letter where they rejected that option, I think maybe a day or two before the last LDNT meeting in July. We got that letter. So at that point in time, obviously, that scenario wasn't going to work. And we came to LDNT that day and said, "Look, we are working on a third option, and we can't tell you the details, because it involves real estate transactions and property acquisition and easement acquisition," but we said, clearly, there would be no change to the basic layout of roads, streets, the lake would still remain, the detention would still remain. The only issue was, we would not be taking the outlet from the lake and running it into an infiltration bed here, but running it through this new easement that we were able to acquire through Sutherland and down into the Hades Kennedys Park. And let me just say, we've done a lot of work in this community. I think we've got a lot of respect of neighborhood groups, other engineers, other professionals, and I think we have MSD's respect. I've sat uncomfortably taking some shots on behalf of our company, and I certainly understand and appreciate the photos I saw and the problems that you have, and I don't mean to dismiss those at all out of hand. There's clearly some other considerations that are going on with Sutherland and the James Taylor Neighborhood. But that's the reason why we've spent the better part of eight months developing a plan that avoids that. And with respect to the details on the plan, I would point out that we show a concept storm layout, we show what we're doing on rear yards next to Sutherland and Innisbrook. We clearly show that all the pipes are discharging into our lake. There's flow arrows on the map, how the roads are being drained. There's a discharge pipe from the lake right here that connects up to the storm system that comes through Sutherland. When you look at the detail also that MSD has available, remember, this is a fully developed area. Sutherland was developed, there's plans, Innisbrook was developed, there's plans that relate to all of it. All of that's public information. Anybody can walk up to the MSD counter and say, "Look, can I see the drainage map for this part of Sutherland or for this part of Innisbrook?" We did that. We looked at all the drainage outlets, and there were very few options. This particular option that we have selected actually came up in informal discussions with MSD, probably in March or April. We didn't think we could get an easement out there, so we discounted that out of hand. And it wasn't until we actually entered into some significant discussions with that property owner that that was able to come to pass. So these options were not pulled out of the sky on August 6th. We've been working on this very closely with MSD in accordance with their design manual. There's a lot of procedures, there's fundamental drainage calculations that go with all the drainage areas that were developed in both Innisbrook and Sutherland. All of that's public records. And when we look at that, and we make an assessment that this is the best alternative to take, and we bypass the James Taylor Neighborhood and all that flooding area downstream, this becomes the best option we could have had. We didn't have to obtain an easement, and that easement would have had a 48-inch pipe probably in it. So this ended up being an outstanding option for us to pursue. We are fully committed to working with parks on any kind of downstream improvements there. As I said, I've spoken with Jason Canuel, and we had a pleasant conversation today about what's happening there. But it's important you understand, this is not a new pipe that's coming out there. This is the existing drain pipe that already serves Sutherland and serves part of the undeveloped part of this property. That's where the drainage naturally went, and that's where we're taking it. The bypass that we've done in terms of this, in terms of the James Taylor Neighborhood, this is remaining unchanged. The lake, the wetland in here, everything that's happened in here, and the outfall pipe that comes through Sutherland, that is totally unchanged. We're not altering that at all. So I just wanted to clarify that for the record. Like I say, we filed our plan on February 11th. This has been a long time in the works. We provided an appropriate level of detail, given the storm, given MSD's design manual, their requirements. They were the ones that asked us, "How big could you, how much detention can you get in that lake?" And we sized it with as much volume as we could, and with the pure intent of mitigating any downstream problems we had. So I don't know if you have any other questions related to the drainage question. All I can say is this was a lot of work, there's a lot of public information that's available that the other engineers, you've commented, they didn't have any information, it's public information at MSD. You walk up to the counter, you can look at the maps that have been designed, and you can look at those just as easily as we did. And I would say, one other comment, and I think one of the gentlemen with Sutherland remarked that they had never heard anything from us on this project. We had a vigorous neighborhood meeting on January 15th. There was a lot of opinions expressed, and there was a lot of concern, everybody in Sutherland and a lot of folks at Innisbrook. We received phone calls from Innisbrook. "We'd like to sit down with you and talk with you, we've got some concerns about the plan." And we sat down with them, and we talked with them, and we looked at individual circumstances they had. We're always willing to sit down and talk with anybody. I think the Planning Commission knows that from our history. We've always been willing to do that. And I think that's the way we build consensus, we build partnerships with people, and we keep the public informed as to what we're doing. We never heard anything from Sutherland or any questions at all about what we were, what our intent was, so, be that as it may, that's where we are. Thank you.
I'm not going to take the rest of my time. I know, I've got plenty of time with my music. You have heard quite a bit tonight. You've got a full record before you, inserting the fundamental question, "Does this plan comply with the subdivision regulations and the Land Development Code?" We've heard a lot tonight about things that are outside of the Land Development Code and outside of the subdivision regulations. And those things, as I said before, while they may be interesting, are not and should not be part of your decision. The evidence that we've provided to you tonight indicates that all of the lots meet the minimum lot size, the required road connections have been made, the required industrial connections have been made, there are notes on the plan indicating that tree canopy regulations will be complied with. We are impacting a minimal amount of wetlands compared to the overall amount of wetlands on the property, and certainly compared to the jurisdictional wetlands. We are preserving more than 20% of the property as open space, retaining more than 270% of the required amount of detention. And through the efforts of the developer, have come up with a drainage solution that will remove water from the downstream watershed and put it into proximity to the river, which is what every agency that's looked at this property says is want to happen. All of these things touch on the Land Development Code, the compliance and the subdivision regulation compliance of the riggers. This is a proposal that is less than half the city, that could be allowed on a property, and that mitigates offsite impacts like very few subdivisions that you see. In response to this case, you've heard a lot about things that aren't the subject of those regulations. I would ask that you respectfully put those remarks in their place, where they belong, in the core permit review, SHPO review, Fish and Wildlife review. Look at the core information that we have provided to you about your role in the process and approve the subdivision as proposed. Thank you.
Pat, you said that you've got willingness to be open and work with people, does that mean the answer to my question of, will you provide copies of the construction plans to the requesting engineers?
Sure, we can do that.
So any, you know, I'm sure you prefer it to be engineers, so that you talk in the same language.
I would like it not to be a mechanical engineer, another civil engineer.
I mean, uh...
It'd be fine.
Right.
Sure.
And because what I'm thinking on that, and this might be more deliberation than anything, but, you know, the real big issue on this thing is flooding, and people have looked at the other place and they see flooding, so they're understandably gun-shit. I think, you know, by having that willingness to say, "Okay, here's the homework, here's the books," for others to look at if they want to do that, that should give them a little bit greater comfort. The question is, what happens if you guys think this is the way to do it, and the engineer says, "No, that pipe needs to be the next size larger." I think probably the solution to that would be, rather than the record plant, which is the very last stop before things happen, for that to be retained, approval, the approval of that plant to be retained by the Planning Commission, rather than staff approval, if there is going to be a difference in engineering opinion, like, somebody make your case and figure from there.
Trying to unpack all that, that was related to us giving consent to another engineer to look at the plan prior to construction approval?
The other engineer, they would get the plans that they're getting, and if for some reason they don't agree with what you're doing, and they come up with something else, then, you know, they should have the ability to make a case.
MSD is a chief, you know, as I said before, even this stage of the subdivision process is relatively cut and dry. You check all the boxes, you get your approval. When you move from this stage to construction plan review, it's an engineering review in the sense that it's a math problem. And MSD is the one who ultimately determines, does the math work or does the math not work? Having engineers come back before this body and argue over construction plans is something that I've never seen done in my career, and I would not recommend that my client accept. Sharing information is one thing, but ultimately, the decision that should rest with MSD needs to remain with MSD.
And I agree with you that two plus two equals four regardless of who's doing the addition.
Correct.
And anybody that would be reviewing that would concur with that, but I'm just, you know, being on background, I think about every possibility, try to have a solution for it before it comes up, so...
Like I said, sharing information is something that we commit to.
And I would say that, so basically, you're suggesting that if an engineer disagrees with what you're proposing, that it makes your case, MSD.
That's correct.
Let MSD be there. Because they are in some degree responsible to the public, and they're...
I think they're completely responsible to the public, and, you know, they're great players. I think pretty much everybody here is one.
Okay. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Jeff, do you have a question?
Well, for Pat, yeah. I don't know if you can pull up that last slide, because I appreciate the way you described that.
Let me get your pad out there.
I'm not sure that we, I'm ready to do that. I don't know what happened, but I promise I did.
Okay, wait, maybe we don't need to, but I think the way you were describing the existing runoff now came through the site and then entered into Sutherland, and you said that was going to remain unchanged, but I think you are overall reducing peak flow because of the oversized detention?
Some of that drainage is being diverted into the lake and out, you're correct.
So it is being changed.
Some of the watershed is...
Yeah, I guess technically, some of the watershed is being reduced, and we're diverting it into the lake and then out the other direction. But just that little corner of the property where the wetland sits, that's remaining completely unchanged.
Which I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, because that is contributing to the flooding downstream, but you are diverting some of that water that causes the flooding now to your new easement and piping over to the park.
That is correct. That is correct.
Thank you. Oh, well, the other question came up about the traffic impact study. This did not meet the warrants to require a traffic impact study, correct?
That's correct.
So this would be a question pretty bad. Just so I get kind of follow-up on what Jeff just asked about the wetlands and the drainage through the property. Right now, this property is 46, 49 acres, something like that, and it takes, it looks like water from offsite from Inverness in a large way, and whatever's beyond Inverness, probably the, oh, I can't remember the gentleman's name that had the farm out there.
Wallace Farm. The Wallace Property?
Yeah, right. So that all flows through here, and primarily through what I call the middle of the property. It looks to me like you've taken all other parts of the property, the new streets, new housing supply pots and the like, and that all, all that flow appears to me, most of that flow is going to the direction like, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And just to further make sure, I absolutely understand, lots of testimony today about downstream, other downstream folks, including Sutherland and particularly the James Taylor property. When it leaves that lake, none of this flow from the lake will go to those areas, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Just want to double check that. That's the way I read it, I wanted to make sure that's correct.
What happens when it overflows the lake?
All right, can I ask you another question?
You'll answer.
I'm sorry, I'm not taking testimony before that.
Not a testimony, this is a question. So what is stressful happens when it overflows the lake? It'll be full all the time.
We'll take a break for 10 minutes.
About four blocks of the question.
How do you get?
I'll take my questions.
Okay, we already convened a business session. Chief, would you like to start, please?
This is a subdivision case, it's not a rezoning case. I think there's not as much discretion allowed in subdivision cases as there are in zoning cases. Some of the issues that they brought up, I think, are things I'd like to add is finding elements that this was a zoning case, but I think some of the concerns I had are going to be tempered a little bit by just the way the process works. And I think for the benefit of the public, you know, this is not the final approval, this is basically one step along the way. And what we're seeing right here, I think at this step is whether or not it is zoning appropriate for what you want to do and do they meet the subdivision requirements or regulations rules there in the land development code? I think that they have made a case that they do. I've not heard any testimony come up tonight saying they don't comply with land development code section, whatever, because of this. You know, they talked about some very broad issues, but nothing, no specific violations of the land development code were pointed out. So I'm satisfied from that standpoint. The big, the big elephant in the room is the flooding, and I can understand, as I mentioned, the concerns of the adjacent subdivisions because of their flooding experiences and they're afraid it's going to get worse and it's just going to make it real bad. I think that MSD is very well aware of the situation and they're going to be extremely mindful before they approve anything else to avoid that situation and, you know, be subject to criticism, because they're like but anybody else in public service, they hate to be criticized or something. And I think the willingness on the part of the applicant to share their construction plans with any engineer licensed in Kentucky to examine the plans, just to see whether or not they've missed something or things add up. And if they have a disagreement, then they can present that to MSD, who has probably the greater level of expertise in that particular area than us compared to us. I'm not concerned about the additional traffic. You know, I live in a subdivision that's about the size of what this is, and simply because we've got that number of homes, it doesn't mean there's twice that number of trips in the morning and the afternoon. We've got a lot of retired people in the area that, you know, they move around at different hours of the day than this, you know, typical workday folks. As far as emergency response, I think we're good on that. The fire department's approved it. I've known from my previous time with the fire service that Harris Creek has implemented other measures or things to compensate for flooding situations in other subdivisions. I think if they saw that as a major problem for this subdivision, they would have stood up and spoke up. The wildlife and the wetlands issue, I think those are going to be issues for other entities to deal with, and if they're not satisfied with them, they're going to turn them down and they're not going to approve the plans and this subdivision won't happen, so. You know, unless I hear something further down, I'm inclined to approve this subdivision.
It's really not easy for us to vote no on a preliminary subdivision plan when it meets the subdivision regulations of the land development code and zoning is not being requested to change. I understand why persons here tonight are thinking that they don't have all the minute details that an engineer wanted to review and that, and I know why they're not available, because this is a preliminary process, I mean, this is a preliminary plan, which in other words, is the concept until the construction plans are drawn and until they get the permits approved from MSD, Army Corps of Engineers, and whomever else the permits will be needed for them to go further into construction. Who else I want to say? And they've got to get those permits before they can get the construction plans approved. So I say right now, this plan that we have before to meet the regulations that we have to abide by, and I think it's also pertinent for people, citizens, to understand, the planning commission does not give permits. Planning commission reviews development proposals. So I think people are giving us more authority than we really have. And we make decisions on either the comprehensive plan or add or the subdivision regulations, but we do not give permits for things. And I'm hoping that people come to understand that we're doing our job, but we can't do give permits.
Yeah, I think Lula's said it best, and we're bound by the four corners of land development code. This is the very first step in the process. All we're approving, or all we're acting on is the form of the subdivision and whether it complies with land development code. All the proper agencies that will need to review and issue permits will give, be given that opportunity after the detailed construction plans are developed, and this is not the stage for that level of detail. That being said, this complies with the land development code, so I really don't see any reason we would vote no on this. So I support the plan and the condition of approval. I propose with the addition or condition that the applicant is requesting.
So why do you spend quarter and a half hours here breaking up the issue?
Please be quiet. Please be quiet. We are in a business session. Commissioner Tom.
I agree with what's already been said. I am particularly, I think the big issue is drainage that we've discussed over and over again tonight as I see the plan. The flooding that's already out there is with this property undeveloped, and as I look at the plan, the added storage for stormwater runoff is being added to this entire property. And the fact that it's taking that flow, that part of the flow away from the properties in Southern and James Taylor is really important to me, has been a good addition to what's a, you know, pure development plan, preliminary plan. And I, you know, I must say I respect all of the great work of the river fields. I'm a little disappointed to hear that, you know, the drainage problem that exists in this entire area isn't because of this undeveloped, this non-developed property right now, but it's a, it's a public problem. I was particularly interested in, you know, Ms. Ryan's comments about, you know, they exist for the public good and so forth, and it's disappointing to me that if a larger pipe could be run across their property to solve something that's for the public good, you know, I don't quite understand why the privacies matter such a big issue, but hopefully that might be something that could be looked at and maybe the lawyers could come to a different conclusion.
I believe that my concerns about the drainage issue have at least been helped with the explanation of where the water is going, how the developer is going to deal with the issues and with the potentialization and plans to run it out through the area, the Hays County Park area, I feel that should help. I appreciate all of the comments about drainage. I know it is a problem. Again, this development meets the land development code requirements with other divisions. It's our job, as other members have stated, that we adhere to the charms that we have. And so I can approve the preliminary, preliminary plan for this subdivision.
It's hard when you're the last commissioner to speak. Everything has basically been said. I agree with the public commissioners, and I like the way the drainage issue has been approached by the developer. I think it would help the people in the other subdivision in the southern that approve their drainage problems because of what they were doing. And it won't be eliminated, but it should improve it. And this would, I'd like to thank you all for coming out and spending all this time. I have a decision that I know is very important to you, but we just have to remember this is only a preliminary plan. You've got a long way to go, and I think we should let these developers move forward.
Well, I agree with what's been said. This is a preliminary plan. There's no variance or waivers requested. It does meet the requirements of the land development code and the subdivision regulations.